All right. I hereby open the 2022 Annual Town Meeting and call it to order. My name is Jay Tallerman. I am your town moderator. I declare that the warrant has been duly posted and published and that the reading of the warrant is hereby waived. If we could stand for a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's a small crowd, but I see a lot of familiar faces and some new faces, too. Welcome all of you. As is our custom and tradition, we take this time at the beginning of town meeting to honor those who have passed since last year or have given service to the town. Those include Constance Le Chance, James F. Ward, Philip Day Lucans, Georgia Jones, Dorothy Chafee, Nancy Connors, Kathleen Mullinow, Charles Jones, Cynthia Stanfield, Charles Pine, Robert Bremlis Jr., and Stephen Hamlin. If we could have a moment of silence for them. Thank you. Introduce some of the players here tonight. To my left, we have Carol Green, our town clerk, Rebecca Teft, our assistant town clerk, Todd Linmark, our finance director, select board members Kevin Calcutt and Anita Mecklenburg, Blithe Robinson, our town administrator, and our town council, Tom Harrington, on the end of the table. Our advisory board, which will make most of the motions tonight, is chaired by Susan Klein. So let's go through some rules for town meeting first. We are governed by town meeting time, which is kind of like Robert's Rules of Order, but better, as well as some local bylaws. I'm happy to provide guidance on any type of motions. I do not like to have people think that there's some kind of dark arts to parliamentary procedure, so if you're struggling to find the right motion or the right procedural device, please don't be shy, and we will help you with that. Motions will be generally made by the advisory board. We do have a couple of motions I want to draw some attention to. One is a motion for indefinite postponement. If you hear that tonight, that means that someone is essentially moving to kill or dismiss or defeat the article here tonight. Those who make the motions will have the first opportunity to explain them. There are maybe some exceptions when we're dealing with zoning articles where the planning board will be doing some explanation. Motions and motions to amend generally must be in writing, provided that for ministerial, clerical, or typo corrections. I will accept friendly amendments without the need to bother for a formal motion. And again, we will help with that procedure. The town clerk will help us with forms and help us gather and put things in the right wording if you want to make a motion to amend. So we're here to debate the various articles. I try and balance discussion as best I can, balancing out pros and cons or even questions on any particular article. Everyone has a chance to speak on a matter, but at a certain point, I will want to avoid repetition. This is especially true today where we have a number of articles to get through, Bruins game, and a lot of things that will draw your attention. So maximum generally of five minutes to the mic on your first time, three minutes for a second time. Don't be surprised if I hurry you along if I think that we're going over territory we've already been. And occasionally, on the converse, I may allow someone with new info to speak a third time if I think that town meeting will benefit by what you have to say. So all comments and questions will go through the moderator. Come up to the mic, give us your name and address, at least the first time you speak. I hope we have a spirited debate and that this meeting both supports and challenges the issues that are presented. However, no personal comments and all comments must be civil and respectful. I want to hear your facts. I want to hear your opinions. What I don't want to hear is what you think someone else's opinion is. That's not relevant. Please provide us what your input is. We have a bunch of local officials here tonight between myself, the select board, the town administrator, and all these other local officials. We will try and get questions answered if an answer is required. So when we get to voting, I'm going to ask for a voice vote. Normally, especially with a crowd that's relatively small as tonight, I can usually deal with just a voice vote. Please, no shouting. I'll just ask for it again. If I still can't discern a result on a voice vote, I may ask people for a show of hands. If I still can't figure it out, I will have you have the vote counted and I will appoint tellers for that process. I do respect what is known as a call of a question or a call to cut off debate. That is a separate motion. It requires two-thirds, and that is the province of anyone to make at any time during the debate. However, if I feel that there is still debate to be had and there are people lining up at the mics, or I think it's premature or used just to shut someone off, then I will not recognize that motion. But generally, if a debate is going on and we've heard enough, I will respect that motion. Again, two-thirds is required. If I think that a debate is had enough, I may hurry that debate and kind of close debate on my own without need for a motion. So there are a number of handouts out on the tables out there. If you didn't get them, you could always go out and grab them. They will help with a number of the articles. We have a couple of lengthy articles that have ministerial changes to bylaws tonight. They're not particularly complex, but they are great in number, and there were some cheat sheets, so to speak, that will help you get through those so you can answer some questions. Before we get started in earnest with the motion, select board member Kevin Calcutt would like to address the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everybody. Tonight, the select board would like to recognize the contributions of a longtime volunteer who has dedicated over 20 years of service to this community. A resident of Norfolk for 54 years and counting, he has served in a number of capacities, including three years on the Norfolk School Committee, three years on the Master Plan Committee, five years on the Economic Development Committee, three years on the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee, three years on the Southwood Zoning Committee, and most recently, nine years on the Planning Board with four of those as chair. I, of course, am speaking of none other than Mr. Walter Byron. Anyone who has had the pleasure of working with Walter knows that his dedication to the betterment of Norfolk is simply unmatched, and much of what makes this town so special is due to his contributions. So on behalf of an appreciative board and a grateful community, it is my absolute honor to present Walter with this plaque commemorating his service that will hang in Town Hall. Walter, thank you. Mr. Moderator, before I yield back the mic, I would like to recognize two more individuals who will be celebrating retirement between now and our next town meeting. To do so, however, I will need everyone to remember a time when "Tie a Yellow Ribbon Round the Old Oak Tree" by Tony Orlando was the number-one song. Jack Nicklaus had just won his third PGA Championship, and Richard Nixon was the president. That year was 1973, and it was also the year that Norfolk's own Charles Stone was hired by the town's water department. From there, he progressed through numerous roles, including firefighter, EMT, special police officer, full-time officer, and detective by 1982. During his tenure as detective, he was joined by one Jonathan M. Carroll, a Rantham Special Police Officer who came to Norfolk as a reserve police officer in 1983. From that point on, both Chuck and John served the community diligently and progressed through the ranks, eventually earning the ranks of chief and deputy chief, respectively. For nearly 30 years, their leadership has not only produced one of the safest communities in the country, but it has also defined our department as one of the best in the Commonwealth. So Chief Stone and Deputy Chief Carroll, on behalf of all of us in Norfolk, may you both find that retirement makes up for the sacrifices that you both have made while protecting all of us. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay. We're going to begin, before we get into regular articles, we're going to begin with what is known as a consent calendar. As permitted under Norfolk's general bylaws and basic parliamentary procedure, I may employ a so-called consent calendar to expedite the passage of routine administrative matters that normally get no debate. Under this procedure, we group routine articles and take a single vote without debate. Articles 11, 14, 15, 17, 27, 28, 29, and 32 will be considered under the consent calendar. I will read each article number and title, and if a member of the meeting rises to say "hold," the item will be removed so that it may be debated in the normal course. The remaining articles will be moved by the advisory board as printed in the warrant. So with that, the first article is Article 11 regarding the reauthorization of revolving funds. I do want to point out with Article 11 that there is a small typo in the warrant which where a number, let me just get to it, one of the revolving funds was misnamed. So our number 2114 on that was misnamed in the warrant, and it is really, its full title is Cleaning and Maintenance of Unaccepted Subdivision Roads. So other than that, it remains as printed in the warrant. Article 14 is for the annual CPA reserve assignments for accommodation of CPA purposes. Article 15 is the CPA budget. Article 17 is for general bylaw renumbering. Article 27 is for Chapter 90 funds, which work, help us resolve issues regarding funding for roads. Article 28 is authorization for acceptance of grants. Article 29 is authorization to sell surplus property. And Article 32 is for the rescission of existing debt that where the purpose has been fully served. So seeing no holds, I look to the advisory board for a motion. So maybe you need to get that microphone a little closer so people can hear you.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes unanimously. Moving on, Article 2, unpaid bills.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article 2.
Do I have a second?
The advisory committee recommends indefinite postponement of this article as there are no prior year unpaid bills at this time.
And there was a second there?
Yes, a second.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. There's a motion for indefinite postponement. All those, any discussion on that?
We have no unpaid bills.
A question over here on the right. Please come down, introduce yourself.
Ernie Alex, 40 North Street. Mr. Moderator, could we, we have unpaid bills. Could we be told what the final is on our police station?
We are going to be getting, there will be another time to discuss that, but that is not, this is for routine unpaid bills of the town.
Well, that's certainly an unpaid bill.
Well, it does not classify. There will be time later to discuss it.
Will that be tonight?
If it fits under a budgetary discussion item, then certainly, sir.
Because we have between $40 and $50 million worth of talking abouts tonight. We should know where we stand.
Again, if that, you want to raise that issue during the budgetary conversation, you can. Seeing no further folks at the mic, all those in favor of indefinite postponement, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It does pass. Article 3, it's present year transfers. Ms. Klein.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve the transfer as shown on the screen in the auditorium.
Have a second. Been moved and seconded, Ms. Klein.
Yep. The advisory committee recommends approving the transfers as follows. The fire department, which is a $30,000 transfer for vacation and overtime, $134,298 for snow and ice removal, and $90,000 for ambulance receipts. If there are any questions.
Any questions, comments on Article 3? Seeing none, this calls for a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 4, compensation schedule.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 4 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Huff.
Yeah. The 1.5% cost of living increase to the compensation schedule referenced by this article applies to town employees who are not covered by a union contract. This proposed increase is aligned with increases that union employees are scheduled to receive this year. Parity and colo between union and non-union employees is consistent with how the town has approached compensation.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on Article 4? Seeing none, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 5 is the omnibus budget. Before we take a motion on that, I want to just tell everyone how we're going to go through the budget. We have, we will have a motion in a second, and then we're going to have presentations by the town administrator, Norfolk schools, and KP schools, if they choose to do so. Then I will read the budget line items. For the last couple of years, the town has consolidated the budget into more general line items to facilitate the ability to make interdepartmental transfers mid-year. However, there is a handout that had a more detailed budget handout that may allow you to get further insight to the little line items within each general departmental budget. When I read each departmental line item, if you have a question regarding the general bottom line or any specific component thereof, please say "hold," and you're free to discuss that. During the discussion, you'll be able to make amendments to the bottom line for each departmental budget line item, and again, we will help if there is a need for that. And that is the process, and again, I will go through that and we'll explain if anyone has any confusion because it is a slightly new approach over the last couple of years. So do you have any explanation from the advisory board's side, Mike?
You want me to make the motion first?
Yes, I'm sorry, make the motion. Apologies.
Yeah. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town fix the salary and compensation of the elected position of town clerk at $85,133.20 as provided for by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, for the fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2022, and further to raise an appropriate sum of $46,935,724 to defray the departmental and incidental expenses of the town not otherwise provided for for the fiscal year commencing on July 1st, 2022, as printed in the handout and as shown on the screen in the auditorium.
Second.
Discussion is, the advisory committee voted unanimously to approve the operating budget for fiscal year 2023, and I believe you're going to go through the line.
Great, thank you. Ms. Robinson.
Mr. Ferrera, if you could put up the budget presentation, please. Perfect, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out to town meetings. It's great to see you all here. So jumping right into it, this is a slide we introduced two years ago when we were, the pandemic had just taken hold, and I'm glad to put this slide up again this year simply because things have gotten better on the financial perspective for the town. This is a combination, this is a comparison of FY '22 and FY '23, the year we're in and the year we're heading towards. And just to run down it quickly, local receipts stabilized this year, and they're slightly improving in what we've planned for next year. We'll talk about that in a different slide. The pandemic costs that we've had have, they've been significant, but mostly covered by federal, various federal programs. They are declining, and we certainly all hope that they will stay that way, and there are some federal funds to pay for them still. State aid increased this year. Next year, it's looking to stabilize. Tax collections are planned to be on track in both years. But the thing that is concerning us the most and probably is concerning each of you and your households is supply chain and inflation costs. Inflation hasn't really hit our budget too badly this current year, but it looks like it will be an issue for us in the coming year. So how are we doing this year? Here's just some facts for you about how that's going. Tax receipts are on track with what we planned, just over 4%. Building permits, we've continued to see additional building activity, and we're overbudgeted as of three quarters through the year. Unbudgeted revenues are up. We received more prison mitigation funds than we planned. We've had also a foreclosure auction to sell properties that have been taken over the town, put them back on the tax rolls. The town gets to keep everything that we receive from that, so that's very helpful. And meals tax is up. That means restaurants are busy, you're all out eating, and that's great. I hope everyone's enjoying that, and that revenue is also up over what we planned. On the expense side, things are also going well. As I mentioned, pandemic costs are mostly covered by federal funds. The department budgets are on track, or if not, a little bit less, and all of the retirement and debt obligations of the town have been covered. So what were our priorities this year? Not on the screen, but always important, is to live within the Proposition 2.5 levy increase and any new growth, which we have done. It was also very important to fund all of the school budgets as they were presented. That's very important to us, and we're happy that we're able to do that. Again, our contractual obligations are filled, whether it's a union contract or retirement requirements for employees, those are all covered. A big item this year we'll talk a little bit more about is the federal MS4 stormwater mandates. It's a federal obligation to clean water that comes from streets and goes into storm drains in a certain way, and that is an increasing cost for the town, especially in FY '23. We needed to add one police officer. That's in the budget because of police reform. As I mentioned, we're continuing to monitor inflation and supply chain issues. We're happy that we have not used any free cash to balance this budget. That was something we did last year and continuing this year. And our overall budget increase is just slightly over a 20-year average. So we'll show this page again. This is the budget you'll vote on by the functional area. I'll just point out a couple things. By a dollar increase, overall, the education budgets are the highest, just over 1.1 million. You'll hear from both the superintents about those budgets, so I won't speak about those. I will just point out that we did see larger-than-normal increases for the tri-county schools. There's nine new students from Norfolk going there next year, excuse me, this year, which has, having, have a big impact. And there was a tuition change at Norfolk Agricultural, which also increased the budget. And you can find that detail in your preliminary budget handout if you're interested. On a percentage basis, DPW is the highest, and that is almost completely due to the stormwater costs that I mentioned. And then debt is going down in two different areas. So a quick slide on revenues on a macro level. This is how we break down revenues. The first three lines are pretty much in line with what we've talked about and what's typical for Norfolk. The other line is $354,000, and that is all from ARPA funds, if you haven't heard that term, American Rescue Plan Act, that we are using for stormwater costs and a couple other things. Overall, the increase is 5%. Just digging into state aid, here's a slide that shows you how that breaks down, what we receive from the state. It's just about 1.7%. This is the governor's budget that comes out in late January. The House and Senate will debate other, their versions of it, and it all comes together at the end of June, early July. There is some, there's some possibilities that some of these will change and go up, but we always budget conservatively with that, with that budget. So just promised you some quick revenue highlights that are specific to Norfolk. The levy increase, as I mentioned, and the ARPA funds. Prison mitigation, we did increase it to 300,000, which is 200,000 more. It's what we received this year, so we're hopeful to get it again next year. And as I mentioned, we're projecting building permits to continue to be strong for another year, so we increased that. Restored meals tax and no free cash use this year. Couple of quick facts about ARPA. If you haven't read up on it lately, we read up about it a lot. You can see the title in the top line. We were, Norfolk is going to receive just over $3.5 million. A third of that is coming directly to us, and the other two-thirds are going to Norfolk County, and we will apply to them for the projects we want to do. I've listed some of the uses there, and we are working on a plan for that. We're going to go over with the select board in the next month. The town, everyone in the country needs to commit the funds by '24 and spend them by '26, and we'll be talking more about that at those meetings coming up. So here are some expenditure highlights. I picked out the ones I thought might get questions. There certainly, there's more we can cover later if people want to. Elections, it's not a big number, but there are three elections next year instead of one, so it stands, stands out as a big percentage. Police, I mentioned that additional officer and contractual obligations, those are somewhat offset by some changes in staff, which you heard about a little bit earlier this evening. Fire budget is up because it's the last year of a grant. We're no longer going to have a grant for the two new, the two new firefighters, excuse me, that we got a couple of years ago, so that's a little bit, a bigger hit. In communications, the MECC, the town had enjoyed with the other founding towns a 100% grant from the state for two years because we took on Mendon and Millville. That grant starts to phase out in '23, and it's an additional $20,000. Board of Health looks like a large increase because we joined a health alliance district to improve our public health offerings. That will be paid by ARPA. And the library's budget is a little higher because we did a pay plan update in the last year and found that our library employees on, as a whole, were generally underpaid to the market, and we were correcting that. An area that hits our budget every year, and this is no different, is fixed costs. The two that stand out are pension assessments from Norfolk County pension of just over, almost 7.4% and health insurance. We're actually pretty pleased with a 2.04% increase. However, last year, because people weren't going to the doctor and such during COVID, we were, we enjoyed a half a month premium holiday that the town didn't have to pay for. we enjoyed a half-a-month premium holiday that the town didn't have to pay for. They're not offering that this year, so that's gone up a bit. And then, as I mentioned, both non-exempt and exempt debt are going down. So, what's the year ahead look like? Just some things to be thinking about. We're going to spend some time being thoughtful about those ARPA funds so that we can deploy them the best way possible. I think that we'll spend them on capital-type items. We can spend them on water, stormwater, that you're going to learn about in the next year, and perhaps sewer projects. Rising inflation and supply chain, that has got all department heads who are sitting down here, I know, a little concerned, whether it's fuel costs. I learned today, paper on a, for a case of paper is going up eighteen dollars next year from where we tend to buy it. Supplies for facilities and maintenance costs are all going up, so that will need to be kept a look on. I think local receipts are going to stay on track. It's been pretty reliable for Norfolk, and we see no reason that will change. I think the town will want to continue to make improvements in capital. We had three million dollars when we started this past year in free cash. We spent about half of that so far this year. There's half left for, we'll spend some, we spent some money on snow and ice a little bit earlier, but continue to make those investments and move the town forward, and then continue to strengthen the town's financial position. Moody's Investor Service just reviewed our situation about a month ago and removed the negative outlook. Why? Because Norfolk is doing better, and we've taken some time last fall to put money in stabilization and in OPEB, and they look favorably on that. So, we're doing well and look forward to continuing to do that. So, with that, Mr. Moderator, I will turn the mic over to, I'm not sure if it's going to be Dr. Allardy.
Norfolk Schools.
Okay.
Yep.
So, if you could bring up the Norfolk Schools presentation, please, Joe.
Before we do that, I forgot to mention that we have Alexandra Rubin also from Town Council's office here today. I'm sorry, should have mentioned that.
Great. Good evening. I'm Ingrid Allardy, the superintendent at the Norfolk Elementary Schools, and I'm here tonight with Barry Nectow, who's our district business consultant, and Victoria Saldana, our director of curriculum. So, I want to start off by just thanking you for giving us this opportunity to share with you some information about the twenty-twenty-three budget request. We feel very fortunate to be part of a community that has historically shown such a strong support for education. We greatly value all of our parents, our community members, senior citizens, who regularly support the schools through volunteering, whether it's in our library, in our cafeteria, or in the school offices. We also wanted to recognize and the partnerships we have with the Norfolk Police. We will greatly miss Chief Stone and Deputy Chief Carroll, who've been great partners throughout the work that we've done. Also, the DPW have been great partners, Norfolk Rec Department, the Town Library. All of your collective efforts really make a difference and enrich the lives of our students every day, so thank you. We have a brief budget presentation to share tonight. I'll start us off, talk a little bit about the budget process and the driving budget factors we're considering next year, and then I'll turn it over to Barry, who will walk you through all of the numbers. We have a brief video at the end to share with you, so you can see the highlights of a year in review. Great, so, Joan, good for the next slide? Great. So, all of our budget decisions are driven by our district mission and vision statement, which you can see up on the screen here. We really, when we're looking at what we are going to fund, what resources we need, what staffing positions we need to put in place, we really look to make sure that the decisions are driven, that are going to have the highest return for our students and are support their academic achievement as well as their social and emotional well-being. The mission statement and vision statement drive those budget decisions, but also, as we plan for the coming year, we had to really think critically about the impact the COVID-19 pandemic has had on our students, and we need, we need to recognize, not just as a district but as a community, that the post-pandemic recovery is going to be a multi-year effort. We need to really think about how we're going to help our students as they transition and return into a new sense of normalcy. Oops, went the wrong way. Great. I think it's important when you're looking at the budget request to take a look at the historic pattern of funding that the town has been able to provide. In order for us to open our school doors in September the way we close in June, and that just means to carry forward the existing staff, to absorb any increases in materials, costs, and supplies, it generally takes the district about three percent. So, during the years two thousand eight through two thousand thirteen, the town of Norfolk, as well as the entire Commonwealth, went through a period of recession. You can see that during those budget years, the town was not able to appropriately fund education. We had years that we had a one percent increase, there were years that there was a zero and a negative increase. That led to very deep cuts, not just at the Norfolk Elementary, but also at the King Philip Regional School. And those cuts involved programs, staffing, positions. We've been very fortunate for the last eight to ten years that we've been looking at a different financial picture, but recovery takes a while. So, if you look at the overall fifteen-year average, our average increase is two-point-seven-nine percent. So, when you have those deep cuts, it takes a long time to recover the lost positions. Again, as I talked about earlier, in planning next year, we have to recognize that there was a year where learning was disrupted. We had periods of hybrid and remote instruction, and families were dealing with all kinds of challenges related to the COVID pandemic. That had a significant impact, one, on students' mental health and well-being. There's lots of national research and studies about the impact that that's had on students' anxiety, on levels of isolation, and that has impacted not just our students but students across the Commonwealth. Additionally, we know that student learning was impacted. The area that was most profoundly impacted, I would say, is the area of mathematics. So, while you can provide students with instruction in a virtual format or online, they miss the opportunities for that hands-on practice and reinforcement of skills. So, we are seeing learning gaps in the area of mathematics locally as well as nationally, and we had to be thoughtful about how we were going to work to remediate those gaps and help bring our students forward. So, those things also drove our budget decisions. Last year, we were able to address some of those critical needs because there was state and federal grant funding available. Through that grant funding, and again, based on our critical reflection on our own student data, feedback from parents and stakeholders, we were able to use ESER grant funds of about one-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand to fund an additional point-eight school psychologist, to fund a point-five social worker, to provide increased access to counseling, wraparound services and supports for families, and in-class instruction to help students as they transition back to in-person learning. We also added a full-time developmental math teacher, again, to provide additional instruction to students who may be struggling in the area of mathematics, to support our teachers in reprioritizing and reteaching standards that needed to be revisited and addressed, and strengthening math instruction. So, our twenty-twenty-three budget request is up about five point, oh, I should have changed that. We reduced per the request of the town by twenty thousand, so the overall request is five-point-zero-two percent increase. And that budget request allows us just to maintain our level services, to meet the obligations we have for contracts, so that would be transportation contract, teacher contracts. It allows us to maintain those three critical grant-funded positions that had been previously funded through the ESER grant, so again, retaining that school psychologist, the social worker, and the additional math teacher. Again, as I said earlier, it's going to be a multi-year effort, and we feel that those are critical to helping our students be successful. We also have to, based on our current student enrollment, we need to increase special education staffing. We have had a large growth in our developmental, developmental delay autism program, early childhood program, so we need to add in an additional teacher to that classroom. And we also have a significant increase in the number of students enrolling in Norfolk who are English language learners, and there are some state mandates around instruction that we have to provide in English language learning, and in order to meet those requirements, we'll have to hire an additional point-five teacher. Again, this allows us to manage cost increases, like I said, paper, cleaning supplies, all of those things have been significantly impacted by COVID and prices have risen. So, our budget allows us to manage those additional costs. Every year, we look at our student enrollment, and we decide how many sessions of classes we need at each grade level based on the enrollment numbers. We have a school committee policy that governs the number of students that we should have in each class, and we annually have to move teachers from one grade level to a next, to the next to meet the enrollment requirements. These are our projections for next year. We are going to have one less first-grade classroom and one more second-grade classroom last year, and another switch around between fourth and fifth grade, but overall, we are not looking to add any teaching positions. It'll be the same number of teachers next year, and all class sizes will fall within those policy limits. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Barry to talk numbers.
Thank you very much. Before we get into particular details on the budget, I thought I'd pause for a moment and talk a little bit about some of the data we use as we think about our budget, not only compared to area communities, but also the state. And this slide shows our spending on a per-pupil basis for the last five, sorry, eight years against the, against the state. The red line being the state and the blue line being Norfolk. You can see on a, on a per-pupil spending basis, we've been below our state for all the years on this particular chart. In this past year, the last year we had the data for is twenty, we were sixteen-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars less on a per-pupil basis than the state average. Next slide, please. This is the same data, but shows us over the past three years against our, some of our peer towns as well as some of our neighbors, and you can see on a per-pupil expenditure basis, we're near the bottom in spending for, for the last three years. Next slide, please. So, another way to think about the per-pupil data is if you take the difference between us and the state and you multiply it by our enrollment, which is approximately a thousand students, we spend approximately a million-six-hundred-thousand less than the state average on our budget. And again, that's a significant amount, if you think about the, our overall budget being about fifteen million, that would be about another ten percent below our state average. Next slide, thanks. Important piece of data we look at is charter school enrollment, because as students leave Norfolk and go to charter schools, budget dollars follow them, and it's about fifteen thousand dollars per student. So, we, we look very carefully at the charter numbers because we want to maintain the highest quality program we can, so we don't have students leave the district and have dollars follow them. And we've done a terrific job in Norfolk of limiting our charter enrollment. Thank you. So, this particular slide and graph shows our budget request of six-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars, or five-point-oh-two percent, this says five-point-one-seven, but it's oh-two, based on some of the major spending categories within the budget. And the largest by far is our contractual obligations, which is salaries and things like our bus contract. You can see another about one percent of COVID recovery, and what that is, is expenses that we were able to pay for with funds from primarily the federal government that we're bringing back into the budget because COVID funds are not carrying over to the, to the next year. So, it's primarily staff that we need to continue to educate the students and make up for some of the learning loss, and the COVID funds have dried up, certainly the effects of COVID haven't. And then you see the other categories of special education and another category in restoration, and generally, those are how we look at the major categories of the, of the budget increase, and in this case, it's six-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand dollars or five-point-oh-two percent. Thank you. Another way I like to look at the budget is sort of thinking about fixed versus variable costs. And this chart shows the big blue part of the chart as what I think of as our fixed costs, and that's primary salary, tuition, transportation, and utilities. So, those are things that we have very little flexibility to reduce on an annual basis, and that makes up about ninety-four percent of the budget, or thirteen million-six-hundred-thousand dollars. So, what does that leave? About eight-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars, or about six percent of the budget for everything else, and that's supplies, materials, textbooks, everything else you can think of. So, as we think about expenses rising that are out of our control, things like paper that was just mentioned, it's in the small portion of the budget. So, we have to be very careful about our spending, and that's the part of the budget that we have the most control over, so we have to be very careful and monitor that closely. Thanks. The next slide is a slide that we like to show because it's where we've taken some steps to rein in costs, and if we didn't take some of these steps, our budget increase or our budget request would be significantly higher. Things like we share our facility director and deputy director with the town. We've, we've expanded in-district programming for students with developmental delays so that those students can be educated in Norfolk rather than go to special education schools outside of town. We've also been very aggressive in writing grants so that we can pay for things with grants rather than use operating funds. So, if we didn't take these steps, our budget request would be about six-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand dollars higher than it is today. And lastly, as we work through the budget process, which begins in the fall, we start with what our needs are from all of our directors and principals, and we review all of them, and we can't pay for all of them on an annual basis, so we have to look very hard at what's our primary needs. And what isn't is lands on this page. It's another two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars that we didn't put in our budget request, things that near and dear to us that we could really use, particularly in the area of staffing and instruction. So, these are what sort of gets left behind that we'll, we'll consider in future years as we, as we work on additional budget years. So, I'm going to turn it back to Dr. Allardy. Thank you very much.
And again, we just want to end with a very brief video that will show you a snapshot of the school year. It's only two minutes, and we'll also frame our budget request. So, Joe, I don't know if you can get that to play?
Guided by our vision statement, to teach, inspire, empower, and succeed, the Norfolk Public Schools strive to offer a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. This school year was unconventional, as we continued to face lingering challenges resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic. As public health conditions improved, the district was able to shift to a more traditional learning environment. Our outstanding arts, physical education, and band program joyfully returned to a live-in-person format. Students have been socializing with peers during recess and at lunch in more familiar ways, and are able to work with partners and groups in their classrooms. Recognizing that the COVID-19 pandemic had a significant impact on student learning and emotional health, the district took specific measures to help address these areas of need. We leverage national research and the expertise of our highly skilled staff to adjust curriculum, purchase instructional resources, and enhance social, emotional learning. Mathematics was the area most significantly impacted by non-traditional learning approaches, an effect that has been seen widely across the country. Even though our teachers integrated technology on a high level, students missed opportunities for the hands-on practice that supports them in mastering and retaining skills. This year, the district was able to fund an additional mathematics teacher. Increasing our math specialist staff has been invaluable to helping students close gaps in learning and strengthen their mathematical knowledge. Studies have also documented the negative impact COVID-19 has had on student mental health. Therefore, SCL learning continues to be a strong focus for our schools. This year, we added a full-time school psychologist and a part-time social worker to support increased access to counseling, instruction, and family outreach. In classrooms, additional time and effort has been dedicated to building community and supporting students with strengthening interpersonal skills. We recognize that post-pandemic recovery is not an overnight process, and that addressing the needs of our students following this global health crisis will take dedicated, focused efforts over the next several years. Our twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budget provides funding to allow us to maintain reasonable class sizes and critical staffing positions, and provide students with the resource and instruction necessary to succeed as we move into a post-pandemic environment. With the generous support of our community, our strong partnership with families, and the continued dedication of our outstanding educational staff, we are confident that we will be able to continue to provide students with the high quality and rigorous education that Norfolk is known for.
Thank you. Paul, you want to offer a few words on behalf of King Philip Schools? Paul, do you want to offer a few words on behalf of King Philip Schools?
I think the students do that intentionally, just so they can watch me lower the mic, so that you can all hear me and see me. And so I will do my best to try to keep it brief. I know that you have a very large agenda, and so I want to honor that. We talk about schools. Traditionally, we think of a school system that has a pre-K to 12 unified continuum of services. Here in the King Philip communities, we have two parts to that same school system. And so you heard the first part of that just a few minutes ago with Dr. Allardy, and she talked about the excellent education that in fact your children are receiving at the elementary level, and I couldn't agree with that more. We see that every day when we see our, the students rising from the Norfolk Public Schools into the KP middle and high school, and they're doing an outstanding job. And one of the things that I will boast is in fact that your children are receiving a world-class education. There in fact are all kinds of studies out there and all kinds of data that shows that Massachusetts is leading the country in its scores. And in fact, when Massachusetts scores are looked at during some of the national and international assessments, and Massachusetts is looked at as its own state, its own country, in fact, our scores are outperforming the world in mathematics, in literacy, and in science. And so when you think about that, and you look at the scores that King Philip boasts, our students are outperforming the state at every level. And so your students are walking away with truly a world-class education, something that we should all be very proud of, and you should all be very pleased with, knowing that you're residing in such a community. With that said, I'd like to speak to you just for a few minutes about the budget itself and what that looks like. There we go. Great. So because we service Norfolk, Rantham, and Plainville, the King Philip Schools really access a so municipality. And so we have to look at both our revenue streams and our expenses. And so we're going to take just a couple of minutes to look at both of them. And I do promise, I know you have a very long agenda, so I promise that although I'm never known to be brief, I'll do my best to try to do that for you this evening. So when we look at our revenue sources, you can see that, in fact, state aid only makes up 23.5% of our overall budget. We supplement that with district funds, with E and D that we use, and then it's our member's towns that make up the difference. And so I think it's going to be important to pay attention to the fact that 23, almost 24% of our budget is state aid, because as you heard our town manager mention, state aid for the town went up by 1.7%. For us, whoops, wrong way, I'm sorry. For us, you're going to see that state aid only went up approximately 1.6%, and we're going to see that in just a minute or two. So 1.61%. So we receive state aid in about, in three ways. Our Chapter 70 money, which is our stu-, per student allocations, our transportation reimbursement, and our charter tuition reimbursements. And while our charter tuition reimbursements went up dramatically, you're going to see in a later slide that our charter costs also went up dramatically, and we'll talk about that in just a moment. But as you can see, our state aid only went up by a total of 1.61%. And it's important to note that you can hear statewide that there's a significant increase in dollars going to state aid to schools. And in fact, Chapter 70 increased statewide at 8.8%. Unfortunately, we continue to maintain that minimal increase. Transportation went up by 11.8, was reduced by 11.8%, and in fact, the charter reimbursement, although went up dramatically, you can see it's not going to be enough for us to balance our budget. So. For district funds, we do our best to try to generate revenue wherever possible, and so we look at things like Medicaid reimbursement. Four years ago, we weren't looking at that as an income source, but we recognized that there was income potential there. And so in fact, there are services that we provide in our schools that are medically based, and therefore we are able to bill Medicaid for those services when students are eligible. And because of that, we're now bringing in an income of almost $100,000, which is what we're projecting to use next year. And so again, we have very few internal revenue sources, but wherever we can, we're using whatever we can, including our E and D, so that, our excess and deficiency, so that we can make sure that we, we do our best to be fiscally responsible as we build this budget for you. So as I said, as a municipality in our own right, King Philip is responsible for not just the education part of it, but the, all of the aspects that go into running a school district. So 61.5% of our revenue goes to cover instruction. We also have to cover things like our technology, transportation, maintaining our facilities, our debt service, and in fact, insurances. So when we break down our departments into those broad categories, instruction, technology, transportation, et cetera, what you can see is that we've done our best in some areas to bring down and actually reduce those line items. In some areas, you're going to see an increase, such as technology, and I think we're all aware as to why technology has grown so much in the last few years. Any of you who have had children at home using your Chromebooks and trying to log into classes knows that we've had to make a sizable investment in technology to make sure that our students are, are successful. All in all, this year's budget, we're looking at a percentage increase of 3.97%, and I'll break that down for you in just a minute or two as to why that's a little bit higher than what it has been in a few other years. So one of the big areas that we do have to, to look at is our special education costs. So in addition to our other out-of-district tuitions, special education is one area that we have. We've worked very hard over the last few years. When I arrived here, we, we looked at our costs, we looked at the programs we had in place, and in fact, in the last four years, we've reduced our special education costs by 48%. But costs tend to run in waves, and interestingly, this year, between the three towns, we're seeing some, some tuitions that are, are higher than we normally have. And so because of that, we're, we're now seeing students moving up that require those tuition supports. Additionally, the elementary districts have been very creative in creating internal programs so that students who might have been placed in other district, out-of-district placements at one point, are now receiving their services within the district. But those programs are, are very specific to those students, and they're required as the students move forward. We did not have those programs at the middle school level, and so for those students to move up from the elementary to the middle school level, they will require us to build those programs. All in all, we were looking at new special education costs rising from the elementary level of almost $750,000. So that has had a dramatic impact on our budget, but we've worked very hard to mitigate that in many ways, to try to keep the percentage increase to under 4% overall. You heard Dr. Allardy talk about charter school enrollment. What we're seeing is a dramatic increase in charter school enrollment at the elementary levels, and we're now starting to see that move up to the, to the middle and the high school as well. Once the students are outplaced, as Dr. Allardy mentioned, the students are now being successful in those charter school environments, they don't tend to move back to the schools at a later grade. So we want to do our best to hold on to them, and Norfolk has done an excellent job of doing that. But the reality is, we're seeing more and more students that are not starting at the key, the King Philip Middle and High School, because they're already in charter school So for those of you who've heard both myself and our business manager, Mr. Larry Azar, who is also here this evening, in case we need to have some questions answered, if you've heard our presentation before, you know it's quite extensive, and there's lots of information, and the formula regarding the assessments is quite complex, but there are multiple factors involved. And this year, as you can see, the way the factors played out, Norfolk's overall assessment is going to be 2.69% for that 3.97% budget, where Plainville and Rantham are seeing higher We put this chart in for you, because sometimes we, we've gotten questions from the audience regarding what the trends have looked like. And so I will point out that the band in yellow, the FY 2018, was a very bad budget year that occurred before both Mr. Azar and myself arrived at the district, and some of you may remember that. But when you look at from FY 2019 to the current budget, the budgets that Mr. Azar and I have put together, you'll notice that our overall increase was 3.19%. I'll bring you back to the presentation that Dr. Allardy mentioned earlier, where she mentioned that running a district takes about a 3% increase annually. So overall, we've been right at that level in the last four years. As you can see, some years Norfolk has been the, the high assessment, where other years you've had a very low assessment, this year being one of those years where your assessment has been a little lower than the other two districts. With that being said, I thank you for your patience, and if there are other questions, we'll certainly answer them when they arise.
Thank you. So we are now going to get into the budget itself. If you have the handout, the budget handout, there is a page that has about eight or nine categories, pretty simple, starts with general government. Behind that is a much more detailed budget. That has all the details, and you're free to discuss any of that. However, I am only reading the categories, because that's how the town budgets, from that first page that has the eight or nine categories. So if the item you want to discuss is within those categories, then hold that particular category. So with that.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to take you up on the offer of procedural guidance. I have the same question, and I'd like to...
So you have a point of order, Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes, yes. I can give you something. I'll give the microphone.
Yeah, can you get up and go to the microphone, tell us your address? Thank you for that.
David Rosenberg, 123 North Street. I'd like to ask basically the same question about every item that has salary in it. Does that mean I should put a hold on every item, or can I make this general hold I'd like to ask about salaries?
We'll ask that after we go through the individual holds, I will give you time to ask that question.
So, so I don't need to put a hold on it?
You do not, you do not need to, if, if that's your primary source of questions. I'll, I'll recognize you when we get through all of the other ones.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So, general government. Public safety. You have a hold on public safety. DPW total cost. We have a hold on that, Thomas? Hold. Human services. Culture and recreation. Benefits and insurance. Debt service. Exempt debt. Okay. So we have a few holds here. We're going to start with public safety. If you had a hold on that, come on down to the mic. Thomas, why don't you reintroduce yourself to the meeting and ask what you have to ask?
Okay. Good evening. My name is Thomas Clayne. I'm from 25 Main Street, lived here over, over 27 years. And I just have a question about what are they going to do with the fire station, new fire station project for 117 Main Street?
So I think we could probably get an answer. There is going to be a presentation in a little bit on that, but do we have someone that can help answer Thomas's question now? Ms. Robinson?
Mr. Moderator.
Here you go. You're all set?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
So we will be talking about that at a meeting next Wednesday, the 18th, and you'll hear a little bit about, more about that tonight. But generally, the project is on track to go out to bid late this year, about late November.
Good.
So that the town could consider having a special town meeting in January of 2023.
Yes.
And a vote to approve the, the monies to pay for it.
Yeah.
And if that passes, then it would start construction early next spring.
Okay. And my follow-up is if anyone wants to see a new fire station, police station project, we have one nearby Millers near town.
Thank you, Thomas. Anything else on public safety?
Yeah, and what vehicles are going to be recycled for, for police SUVs and police cruises? Because we have a, I know that the N9 is a 13, that 2013 that has to be recycled, and the N10 is a 17, 2017 that has Western paint on the hood. Is that going to be recycled?
Why don't we have a chief? You want to, can you offer anything on that?
Typically, that's not a spring town meeting question. It's usually in the fall when we do Capitol. But we did, we did get three new vehicles. Still down at Paul's height, so I'm having trouble with that.
On his way out the door, no less, taking a shot.
So we had an Unmarch car, and we had two cruises come on this year. So we, and they, basically, they just got on, on the road. We bought them last November, as you know. Or we passed a town meeting, and then, and we just got them on the road within the last month. So it took a while. Everybody's experiencing a supply train crisis, getting, getting all the equipment in, getting them lettered, getting radios installed and programmed, all that. So, and so I would say probably around March 1st, April 1st, I should say, we finally got them all on the road. And the other vehicles have been recycled down to the, they've been at the DPW.
Yeah, I see that because Bailey told us.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Bailey.
Everything's, everything's in process, and they should be, they should be driving those, they should be lettered as a town vehicle.
Yeah.
So, yep.
Thank you, Bailey.
Thank you, Thomas. Thank you, chief. Anyone else have anything on public safety? Okay. I think our next hold was DPW. Thomas, you shouldn't have sat down.
My question is about, I have a question about that they're going to do road repairs for road construction for Mill and Paven for the, after 90 funds for FY 22. Not just CHIPS-y like Walpole and Medfield does, but just Mill and Paven. Thank you. Leave that to Bailey.
Do you have someone that can address Thomas's questions there?
So Tom and I had a lengthy discussion, what was it, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
About our paving projects for this year, what we're undertaking. Several roads are in the pipeline. We have, really haven't finalized a lot yet due to supply chain issues and budgeting. We're kind of crossing our fingers, hoping that we'll be able to get the roads we're thinking about doing, done this year. Anything else, Tom?
Yeah, Chuck needs a new stick on his windshield right now.
I'm all set. We did it last week.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. That is it for holds. Up, we have something else on public, on DPW?
DPW, thank you. 138 Red Maple Run. I just would like to get a little bit more clarification on the stormwater management amount, the 306,000. I know there was some revenue toward it, but could you just give us a little bit of explanation of exactly what that is, and then is, is it a one-for-one offset on the, on the revenue, please?
On stormwater management under DPW?
So under our MS4 permit, we're obligated to meet certain requirements when it comes to stormwater. The requirements we need to meet this year are biannual catch basin cleaning, biannual street sweeping. So in the past, those two budget numbers were in the highly budget. We transfer those over to the new stormwater division to budget. Excuse me. Along with that, we have several other costs that we have to look at. We have to inspect inventory, and at some point in time, retrofit all of our detention basins. So that's a pretty hefty number. So what we, what we're looking to do is apply ARPA funding for this year to get us through the hump, to get some of our stormwater compliance done. So the, the stormwater money that we're using the ARPA for, so these are going to be continually ongoing tasks that we have to do. So we're going to have to look at other revenues of funding in the future once ARPA goes away. So this is getting us through where we need to be now, probably into next year, and then we're going to have to look at other funding sources in the future.
Thank you for the information.
Hi, my name's Shayna Cottone. I live in Norfolk. Along the same lines of the ARPA money, it's, has to do with DPW and the funding expenditure, but more broadly as well. If the money for ARPA is being used for the stormwater project, and it needs to be used within a timetable, I know that the woman in the pink jacket, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but you said that there are other line items that the ARPA money is going to be used for. Could you comment on what some of those projects potentially will be? And are they budgeted so that they are going to be paid for right then and there, not And are they budgeted so that they are going to be paid for right then and there, not something that will cost taxpayers money in the future? So not something that's going to be a continual suck of taxpayer dollars, I guess, is what I would call it. Because the ARPA money is a one-and-done thing. And it could, you know, you could obviously do really fun things with it, but we're going to have to keep paying for it once the ARPA money dries up.
So is, is your question to Ms. Robinson, kind of, what's our ARPA picture look like?
Right, because I heard about the storm drain project, which is great, but what else is the ARPA money going to be cut towards?
I mean, a little off the beaten track from DPW, but that's okay.
Sorry, this is my first one. I don't know how this works.
No, no, that's okay. I'm happy to have the question.
Sure.
So, Blythe, if you could fill in the blanks a little.
So we haven't put a specific plan in front of the select board yet. We probably will do that early next month. But generally, the plan is to spend it on things that are already identified in the town's capital budget that need to be addressed. For instance, we need to replace technology each year, so this can offset that rather than coming out of taxes for the next couple of years. We are launching a new website. That's an eligible expense that we're going to spend it on. But in the area... Awesome. Thank you.
Blythe, you can come up here if you'd like.
In the area of water, that's the area we're probably going to focus on the most. And our, our plan, I think, is going to be to spend that on getting shovel-ready, if you will, spending it on engineering costs, so that when other federal grants come along after ARPA or alongside ARPA, such as federal infrastructure grants, we'll be able to be ready to apply for those and continue using, hopefully, other sources of money to pay for them. The one that Mr., that Barry mentioned with stormwater, that's a cost that the town is going to start to need to plan for, how it's going to manage those ongoing costs in the future, because they will continue, hopefully, they will not go up as much as they have this year, but that is something that we, the town will need to plan for. We are looking at a new sewer district. We could, these funds could be used to decide if that's the right approach for the town, and then come back to you with a plan for how that would be paid for, not necessarily from taxes or only in part. So, I'm sorry, that's general, but I don't have the specifics really for you yet.
Thank you. So that takes us through DPW, and that was our last hold. But Mr. Rosenberg had a general comment or question regarding salaries across the board.
Yes, David Rosenberg. So, in looking at this budget, a number of items have salaries listed, and whether those are reasonable or not depends on how many people's salaries are being paid. So my question is, for each salary item, how many people's salaries being funded out of that item? So this is a question that applies to, separately to everything that has a salary item in it.
You want a general? We're not going to go through every, if you have a specific question, we're not going to go through the salary item and ask how many employees in each particular item.
I, I was asking for your advice on how to get that information, and I could have put a hold on everything, and you suggested...
No, no, I, I'm happy to have a general discussion. What we're not going to do at town meeting is go through each salary item and ask how many salaries it supports. That, that is information that's available. I'm happy to have trends discussed on that, if, plus or minus where we've been in the past, but I don't think that's a necessary view of this, to go through 40 or 50 line items and, and talk about how many employees in each. If you have a specific one about a specific line item, we're happy to field that question.
I don't understand how I can make a judgment on the reasonableness of salary if I don't know whether it's for two people, or 50 people, or 100 people. So, I, I think it's necessary information to understand what the salary is for, really. I mean, how many people are being funded by the salary?
So, your question is, is to go line item by line item and tell you how many people are working in each department? Is that what you're asking for?
In essence, yeah.
We're not going to do that. So, again, I'm happy, we have the comparison from the prior year's budget, which is more or less the same. It goes down in some and up in some. If you have something particular, again, our budgeting works on a general line item. So, happy to answer general questions. I don't think it's a good use of town meeting's time to spend the next hour going through however many employees there are per department. Hold on one second. We, I think we can help you, direct you to the information you're seeking.
Okay?
Mr. Moderator, on our website, you will find a preliminary FY23 budget, and that budget document, I actually have a copy, you're welcome to flip through tonight, Mr. Rosenberg, if you'd like, includes for each department, the FTEs, or full-time equivalent employees for every department. So I think that might help answer his question.
Yes, I think that would answer the question. Does department in that document correspond to these things, such as advisory board and selectman town administrator and board of assessors, et cetera? I mean, is that the same level on which your FTEs are reported?
Yes, if you looked at the page for the select board town administrator, you would find in there that it says that there are three employees that are charged to that. One of them is full-time, two of them are less than full-time, and it make, and that's translated to a full-time equivalent.
Okay, I, I think that is satisfactory, Mr. Moderator, so thank you.
And if you have any comments on, you know, what you see in the trends or questions on whether we're going up or down, you're free to answer that. I just, we're not going to get into micromanaging the budget tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So that does it for the holds, and we are ready for a vote on the budget. It's a simple majority vote. All those in favor, unless there's any further wrap-up questions on the bottom line, then it is a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article six, Water Division Enterprise Fund. Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt the Public Works Water Division Enterprise Fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on July 1, 2022, in the amount of $1,773,096 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Seconded. Mr. Garrity.
This article provides funding for the town's water division for fiscal year '23. The water division budget is voted separately from the main budget, as it is paid through an enterprise fund, which is funded from revenues of the users of the water system.
Our Water Division Enterprise. Anyone have any questions, comments on that? Seeing none, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article seven, Wastewater Division Enterprise. Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Moderator, I move to adopt the Public Works Wastewater Division Enterprise Fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on July 1, 2022, in the amount of $177,033 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? There is a second. Mr. Garrity.
As with the previous article, this funds the wastewater division, not the water division, through an enterprise fund paid for by the users. That's why it's voted separately.
Questions, comments on Article seven, Wastewater Enterprise? Seeing none, requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article eight, Transfers to Fund Capital. Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article eight.
Been moved and seconded to indefinitely postpone. Mr. Lutz.
This article would authorize the town to make capital purchases during the upcoming fiscal year from operating funds. Currently, the town does not have any proposed purchases. There may be some presented at the fall town meeting to address the question that Thomas asked earlier.
Thank you. No capital purchases at this time. The motion is to indefinitely postpone. Any questions? Requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes. Article nine. Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article nine.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Mr. Lutz.
Similar to the previous article, the town is not proposing any capital purchases at this time. This would have funded them through debt financing. Again, there, there is expected to be some capital purchase presented at the fall town meeting.
So the, the motion is to indefinitely postpone borrowing for capital. Anyone have any questions or comments on indefinite postponement? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Passes unanimously. Article 10 is, does not require, it is to hear our reports by interested departments, and we have four this year. We're going to start with the Affordable Housing Trust.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. My name is Tom Cleverdon. I'm the chairman of the Norfolk Affordable Housing Trust. I want to take about one minute and tell you what it's all about quickly, and then the director, Susan Jacobson, will fill you in as to where we stand. 16 years ago, we created this, this particular trust in the year 2006. In 1968, the Fair Housing Act was passed in, in the government of the United States, and in response to that, Massachusetts passed a Comprehensive Permit Act in 1969. And that stated that every city and town in the state of Massachusetts should have a minimum of 10% of total housing units be affordable to low and moderate income families as defined by the state standards. An affordable house is one where the mortgage cost is no greater than 30% of income, and the income is set by the state at or below 80% of the area median income. We have seven members, they're all volunteers of this particular committee and, a trust, and we have one member who is a director who is paid by the town of Norfolk. And meetings are held monthly. So what's our purpose? Our purpose is to provide for the creation and preservation of affordable housing for the benefit of low to moderate income families. How do we do that? We buy, or we build houses in the town of Norfolk, and then we sell them at a discounted price to qualified buyers through a lottery system. These buyers are qualified by us, and then, once the lottery brings, gets somebody who wins that house, then that's sent to the state, and the state has to qualify them as well. Money that we use comes from the Community Preservation Act through our CPC in Norfolk, comes from the money that we get from selling homes and the funds generated by our lottery agent, Susan Jacobson. To date, we have around 200 affordable houses in Norfolk, which is about 6%. And as I mentioned earlier, we need to get to the 10% level, so that's what our, our real focus is in our mission. Our trust is currently investigating providing affordable housing in the area and maybe forming a regional affordable housing trust. For a quick summary of our current activity, I'd like to introduce Susan Jacobson, who's the director of the trust. Susan?
Hi, thanks, Tom. I need to bring this down a little bit. First, just to clarify, my salary is paid out of the Affordable Housing Trust and not the general fund. I'm going to update the, this evening, on what the trust is currently working on. The trust, along with the town planner, Rich McCarthy, and housing consultant, Jen Goldson of JM Goldson, are in the process of gathering data, holding public forums to update our housing production plan. Our next public forum is on May 24th, and a postcard will be arriving in your mail shortly. The public forums are your opportunity to provide input into the housing development in Norfolk. Once this task is completed, the final draft will be provided to the trust and planning board for review. Our current housing production plan expires in October of 2022. An updated plan will be presented to the select board in a joint meeting in August that will include the housing trust and the planning board. Once the housing production plan is approved by the select board, it will be sent to the Department of Housing and Community Development for recertification. It is important to have a certified housing production plan in place to assist in the future housing development of Norfolk. It is also the mechanism that triggers safe harbor, which prevents developers from bypassing our zoning bylaws while we're in safe harbor. I would like to thank the Community Preservation Committee for funding, for funding the consulting fees for this project. I am and have been certified to conduct lotteries for the 18 local action units we have held lotteries for in town. These are single-family units. But I have also obtained certification through Mass Housing Can Deduct Lottery, to conduct lotteries for 40B projects that I'm sure many of you see around town. I am currently the lottery agent for four developments located in Norfolk and two developments located in other communities. I handle the projects from the initial drafting and approval of the fair marketing housing plan, advertising, calculating sale prices, approving applicants to enter the lottery, conducting the lotteries, and closing each unit through the process. The anticipated revenue over the next few years that will be paid for the trust for my services is around $400,000. Forty-five of the affordable units will be in Norfolk, and 13 units are outside of Norfolk. If you have any questions regarding affordable housing, please reach out and contact me at the town hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Cultural Council.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gary Sullivan, Barry Lane, I am current chair of the Cultural Council. Just wanted to give the town an update on what we're up to. In April of 2021, we held our first virtual juried art show, which was pretty significant for us to pull off, given that 96 works of art were displayed virtually through a custom website slideshow. This is still available for viewing, by the way. You can find our website off of the Norfolk boards and committees links for Norfolk Cultural Council. And we're looking at possibility to returning to live juried art show later in the year, potentially also doing a, a virtual component of that as well. For the 2022 grant cycle, we are on track to distribute over $7,500 in grant monies. These would go to local arts and cultural efforts, such as the Norfolk Summer Concert Series, the Uncommon Theater Company, and a variety of events held at the library, the senior center, and elsewhere. I also wanted to mention that the Cultural Council is currently looking for members, as many boards in town are, so tell your friends. The grants that we distribute and disperse help support programs that promote education, diversity, and excellence in the arts, humanities, and interpretive sciences. The Cultural Council coordinates the ongoing exhibits in the Norfolk, Norfolk Library Community Room, and sponsors the aforementioned juried art show every year. We meet once a month. No experience in the arts is necessary. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Energy Committee, Mr. Bakanowski.
Andy Bakanowski, Chair of the Energy Committee. Just quickly, I have eight slides, and hopefully it'll take less than 20 seconds apiece. So the topic we're going to talk tonight about is the green community efforts we've done over the past couple of years, municipal aggregation, which we passed at town meeting two meetings ago, future green community work, and other measures for energy reduction. That's the Freeman School, the solar ray that's up there. If you're wondering, if you've ever seen it, it's up there. So the green community, 2021, we received about $178,000 in grants and rebates, annual, with an annual energy savings a little over $33,000. I'll be honest with you, COVID kind of screwed things up, because the way the buildings were being run, more ventilation, numbers were kind of, let's just say they're off, but hopefully we'll, we'll get back on track as things come, come back to normal. We just received another $145,000 plus. That was announced by the schools at the HL of Day. Most of it is going to be at the HL of Day, for building management, as lighting. We've chosen to pick the... We've chosen to pick the low-hanging fruit, which is lighting, and that's easy, it's an easy fix. Unfortunately, it's not cheap, but it does, you know, it does make a dent in our energy reduction costs. We're still working on the rebates because the grant was just awarded about a month ago, and it's about $20,000, give or take. Every year, in January, the utilities change the criteria, so sometimes the rebates go up for a fixture, sometimes they go down, but $20,000 is a pretty good number to work with. And this work that we're going to be doing this summer also looks at the building management systems. It's everything from temperature to lighting controls and a few other things, how the building runs and how it thinks. Other work at HOD is some pump replacements. This is outside of our work. Matt Hafner has given me a very brief discussion to give you an idea how simple this is, is that there's pumps that run constantly, and the pumps that are being changed out that run constantly will change, will be put in as variable speed, or they will run higher speeds when needed and lower speeds when they're not needed, and there's a direct savings. It sounds simple, but it gets tied into the energy management systems, and they're not cheap, but at the same time, they do save money, and there's a relatively quick payback. So, municipal aggregation, we passed this, I see these wrong things up there that should have been taken out. Anyways, the plus and the dot, sorry about that. We passed this at town meeting when we were out in the fields at the King Philip High School. This is really becoming kind of a, I'm going to call it a moral dilemma for me. There's reasons for us to go forward with it, at the same time, because natural gas prices have gone up 82% this year, and I think everybody is feeling the pain with their electric bill and fuel oil. I just paid my mortgage to my oil tank today, so, you know, I mean, it's, there's a lot of stuff that's, that goes into this. There is a reason we should go forward with it, at least get to the point where, when the time comes, then we can actually get enrolled into the program. But I'll be honest with you, I'm going to make a plug for Mass Save. If you haven't called Mass Save, call Mass Save. They will give you free light bulbs, they will do a free energy audit obligated by the utilities to do this once every three years. Believe me, you can save a fair amount of money, and just by normal, just by normally changing out light bulbs to more efficient LEDs, you could see a 10% drop, which is pretty much the equivalent of what the municipal aggregation would be. So, there's other ways to deal with your energy bill. So, future funding, municipal lighting, this has been, I see Bob smiling over there. This really is a difficult thing to deal with. I know talking with Dave and talking with Rob from their experience working with lighting and the municipalities they work at, this is really a tough nut. There could be a lot of savings, but there's a huge cost to the town, and this is something we just have to look at this really carefully. Town of Walpole just became a green communities. The first project they're dealing with is a multimillion dollar, changing out 1,000 to 2,000 light bulbs on their streets. It's a crazy amount of money, but that's what they chose to do. So, and again, their funding is probably limited to $200,000 from the green community, so they made that decision. So, I'm not going to fault them, but again, it depends how things fell together. The bigger thing that we'll set is that the HVA system in town hall, we are on borrowed time on this. We are definitely at the end of life. 1996 is when the building was built, and, you know, it's time, it's time. So, one of the things we need to do is complete a study to evaluate engineering electrical needs, and then also the sizing system, evaluate the fuels that we'd be using. So, as I said, end of life. Matt said we spent over $58,000 last year keeping the system running for a variety of reasons. The options are do nothing or total system replacement. We're kind of getting to the point where we have to make a decision sooner than later. And the considerations of fuel sources, natural gas, and fuel oil or other means, fuel prices, as you know, continue to go up. I don't know what you guys are paying for fuel oil. I mean, $5.65 a gallon was today, so it's up there. So, in this matrix, you do nothing, you continue to spend money on making repairs, we risk total failure of the system, the building shuts down, if it's in the wintertime, it freezes. Believe me, bringing an emergency generator in or some type of emergency backup fuel system or fuel heating system is going to be $100,000 easily for three months, easily. So, look at various fuel sources. The natural gas line, a couple of years ago, they were talking $230,000 to bring that up to the town hall. Might as well make a detour to the library while we're at it, but that's something that you have to look at in this whole thing. The fuel oil, the fuel oil tank, looking at the age that tank, it's 25-plus years old. I know the fire chief would appreciate having a tank that he has to worry about. You're getting towards the end of life on that as well, so that's something I have to be looking at. The $120,000, that's based on a project I did about a year and a half ago. Given the COVID increases, that's probably $150,000 now, but $120,000, I think, is a reasonable thing to look at. The high-efficiency boiler is $350,000 to $500,000 if we stay with fuel oil, if we go with natural gas. We do have some rebates available to the utilities, but I didn't include those in there because, again, I don't know what the programs are available. They move every year. If we consider a ground source heat pump, the cost is about $1.1 million, and this is, again, based on a project I did a few years ago, so might be a little bit higher, but eliminates the use of natural gas or fuel oil. The benefit is, is that a ground source heat pump is 300% more efficient than a fuel oil system. Fuel systems are 80%, 85% when it gets to commercial size, so you're looking at a savings there. I ran some really quick numbers, and to give you an idea, a fuel, fuel oil system to create 1 million BTUs of heat works out at about $41 per megawatt, excuse me, per BTU versus a heat pump is $21. So, you're seeing almost a half-cost savings operating, so that's something we need to look at. This is why an engineering study needs to be done. So, there will be an electric cost. I have my own solutions, which I know won't sit well with people, but I'm a big fan of solar canopies, but this is something we need to look at. But we'll see. We have other things to cross before we get to that point. So, the solution, though, with a ground source heat pump is that we have the ability to get alternative energy credits, so we could actually be generating revenue and offset some of the payback, or increase the payback time. So, but again, we need to file, we need to get a engineering study done, and we're planning to do that in the fall. So, thank you. So, there's a town hall in the upper left, a few solar canopy projects. Rob, you should recognize Newton Public Library. So, just went in. And Whalen, Don Clark isn't here, but that's the Whalen Town Hall in the upper, right next to the town hall. Lower bottom here is actually a large geothermal field that's being, that was put in Boston, and the canopy on the right-hand side, that was actually put over the canopy, or the canopy was actually put over the solar field. So, the technology exists, it's been done before. I've worked on projects, and there's people out there that can help us get along. But our first step is to get the, get an engineering study funded in the fall and go from there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. That's all right, not bad for you. Fire Station Building Committee.
Hi, Kevin Champagne, Two Seneca Street, Chair of the Fire Station Building Committee. I'll be brief. I know we have a long night tonight, and as Ms. Robinson mentioned, we're actually going to have a community meeting about a week from tonight, May 18th, at the library. I'll mention that at least two more times here, so that if you didn't get that. So, a quick summary, this, I kind of went over some of this information at the fall town meeting, so it might be a little repetitive for some people, but we were formed last spring in 2021 to come up with a plan to renovate or replace the fire station. So, we've been continuing with that project. Last spring, summer, late summer, we hired an OPM, Vertex Companies, and then with their services, hired a architect, Doran Whittier, in the summer and fall. Since that time, we've been meeting regularly on every other Wednesday as a committee, along with the OPM and architect. They also meet at working group meetings earlier in the day on Wednesday, and then typically we'll go, those are very in-depth, and they'll do deep dives into the floor plan, and then we'll kind of go over everything at a high level at the committee meeting that night and make any decisions that are necessary. To date, we've hosted three community events, two at the fire station, one at the senior center. We've had okay attendance. I'm hoping maybe next Wednesday is better. We've generally reached out by Facebook, but hopefully kind of bring it up to people here, we might get a little better attendance. Really, we want your attendance. We want to show you what we've come up with, how we've gotten to the point where we've gotten, and really get the community feedback, because this is an important project. It's going to affect all of us, affects the people on the committee. We're making what we feel is the best decision, but we certainly want the whole community input. And the next community event, like I mentioned, Wednesday night at the library. It should be a little warmer than the two that we had at the fire station, so if that was what was keeping you away, hopefully that gets addressed. Brief project background, as I'm sure many of you know, the renovation of the fire station was originally part of the public safety project that moved the police station down by the Eagle Brook. For a variety of reasons, that project went over budget and left not enough money for the fire station project to properly go forward. We were left with enough money to restart the process, take a fresh look at the project, hire an architect, hire an OPM, and that's what we've done. So, in the meantime, the fire department continues to live in substandard conditions. Anyone that has not gone to see it, I implore you to do so. I'm sure the chief would be happy to set something up to walk you through. We have some photos of the conditions that they're living in here. They're essentially living in a trailer behind the facility, working in a facility that really was constructed for the police department and then was never renovated as part of the past project. And really, their piece of it was an apparatus bay that was built in 1960 that is way too small. It is amazing how they fit all their vehicles in that apparatus bay. They have to get special vehicles that the bumpers actually fit over the top of each other, so it's really, I know people in town have voted for this project before, but it's really a pretty necessary project and something that we feel strongly about as a committee. Where we are in the process, we completed schematic design in March and presented that to the select board. All these meetings, select board meetings that we present at are biweekly meetings on Wednesday, all on YouTube if you want to watch them, can update you on the schematic design. The floor plans that have been currently developed are actually on boards out in the lobby here at town hall. So, we're continuing into what is called design development, which is a further progression of the schematic design, identifying how the building's going to look, how the floor plan's going to lay out. That is scheduled to be completed in June, at which time we'll present to the select board again, hopefully get approval to move into construction documents. That's kind of the finalization of the plans before we go to bid in the fall. As, again, Ms. Robinson mentioned, the plan is to go to bid in the fall. We feel that's kind of the best time to bid it. Contractors are typically looking to set up their books for the following year. You'll generally get the best pricing when you bid a project at that time. So, the plan would be bid it in the late fall, have the bids in hand, have a town vote with the actual construction bids in January, and then move forward with the project in the spring should it pass. Touching on a few of our outreach methods, we are up on the town website. The website is being revamped, but we are up there now. There's, we've posted frequently asked questions, there's probably about a dozen questions or so on there, ones that we've gotten time and time again, so certainly check that out. At the community meeting next week, we'll have a QR code that you can scan that'll bring you right to the frequently asked questions and other pertinent information on the website. When the website's revamped, it's actually going to be a little more streamlined, you'll be able to access all the documents a little more easily. They're on the website now, but sometimes it can be a little difficult to find. If you didn't do so, please check out the boards that we have in the lobby. It goes through the construction cost, the estimated construction cost, kind of where the construction costs are landing relative to other recent public safety and fire station projects that have been completed, some photos of the existing conditions that, again, the fire department's dealing with, as well as some other information. And so, one last time, community event next Wednesday. It's going to start at 7:30 PM at the library, so hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our reports. Article 11 was on the consent calendar. Article 12, master plan funding. Mr. Bichkovsky.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $50,000 to fund professional services to update the town's 2007 master plan, including expenses incidental and related thereto.
Your second.
Second.
Mr. Bichkovsky.
The last town master plan was written in 2007 and needs updating, given changes that have happened within the town since then. Master plan will inform the town committees and boards on a coherent direction to coordinate decisions made on many important topics that will be upcoming. Professional plan costs about $140,000, and the town has a state grant for about a third of that cost. This $50,000 request, along with a $40,000 grant, will start the study, and the full cost will require the approval of another $50,000 at the May 2023 annual town meeting.
Any questions, comments on the master plan funding? Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you. So, if you know that an additional $50,000 will be requested to complete it, why not request the full amount now?
So, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, is because of the two fiscal years, so next year's will be for the next fiscal year, and this is for fiscal year 2023.
And, Mr. Moderator, is it correct, then, that one can't finance something across multiple fiscal years at once?
Whether you can, there's certainly the possibility of doing that. They've clearly made a strategy decision to break up that cost. I don't know why, if it's to not burden the tax rate or to maybe have a better understanding of what their needs are. I would rely on the, perhaps, the planning board or whoever else is organizing this. It's just a strategy decision, it strikes me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Good evening. I'm Chad Peck, Ten Rides From Road. I am a planning board member, and so I just wanted to just give you a quick little update. You know, what is the purpose of a master plan? The master plan is a policy framework for decisions that affect the physical, social, and economic environment of our town. The plan represents vision, direction, goals, and strategies to guide the town over the next 20 years. Why do we need a new plan? As stated earlier, our current plan was implemented 15 years ago in 2007, but work on it started several years prior, so we're reaching that 20-year point, so we need to get started now. Our current plan is reaching end of life, so we need to get started with a new plan. Why do we need to hire a professional? Well, a major advantage in hiring a professional is that they are an expert in their field with invaluable knowledge on surrounding communities. They know what has and has not worked with other communities. They can provide additional ideas that we may not have ever considered. Additionally, they help to streamline and expedite the process by coordinating with the town planner and helping to facilitate community and board involvement. The town planner will act as the local coordinator of the master planning effort, assisting in organizing and providing information to the various town committees and community as a whole. For example, we could spend several years ourselves trying to create a master plan with little to show for it, but if we hire a professional, that will expedite the process and ensure that we create the best plan possible for this town. So, in conclusion, now is the appropriate time to start our next master plan with a higher professional support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Sir, come on up to the mic.
Anthony Kennedy, Seven Margot's Way. Just a quick question, how will this be paid for? It's not in the general operating budget, I assume.
It's free cash.
It'll be paid out of free cash?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ed?
Mr. Moderator, Ed, head, Ed. Mr. Moderator, I don't know how this would work, but is it possible to change the amount to cover the full amount of the expenditure for the report?
So, it's possible to amend the amount, Ed, but doubling, I think, would be outside the scope. You know, I normally would allow fluctuations north of 50,000, but doubling, I think the folks at home probably wouldn't get noticed that you would double a line item, so I'd be reluctant to allow that motion, Ed.
Okay, thank you. I just agree with David, I think it's just illogical to, we're funding 2/3 of it, and why not do the whole thing? thing?
Sounds like you're ready to volunteer for the master plan committee. Welcome aboard. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 13 is for a feasibility study for the schools.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $225,000, of which $145,729.85 will come from free cash, and $79,270.15 will come from the H. Olive Day Roof Replacement Project to fund a feasibility study to expand the Freeman Kennedy School located at 70 Boardman Street.
Second. Been moved and seconded, Mr. Bechkovsky.
When originally designed, the Freeman Kennedy School included an expansion option in its design. Increased enrollment and projected growth show that it's time to start the study process to utilize that expansion. The study will determine the cost and timeline to build that expansion option from the original design.
I believe there was a handout, and Dr. Lardy, do you have a, want to add anything to the discussion?
Sure. So, in the packet that we handed out when you walked in for the school budget, on the last page, there's information about Article 13. Just a few things that I want to highlight. As you're probably aware, just driving around town, over the past several years, Norfolk has experienced significant growth in development and construction. Back in 2017, the town and the schools put together a space study committee, and we hired a consultant, Nezdeck, to do a demographic and enrollment projection analysis. When we were looking at, at the time, there were, I believe, eight pretty significant 40B projects, and Nezdeck, based on the study that they completed, was projecting that the schools would see an enrollment increase of up to 300 students over the next 10 years. The COVID pandemic and the supply chain issues have slowed construction slightly. Over the past four years, we have enrolled 80 more students. We just recommissioned Nezdeck to do a new enrollment study, and it is really holding with what we had seen in the past. So, they're expecting over the next six years, we'll see another 195 students as those houses and units become available for sale, and based on trends in birth rates, we are expecting to see that growth. Currently, at the H. Olive Day School, we are completely out of space. On the back of the handout, you can see, we have, a couple of years ago, we had to dismantle our computer media center. That computer technology teacher and all of our technology equipment is now housed on the H. Olive Day stage in the cafeteria gym area. The computer instruction travels from class to class with the instructor bringing materials. We, next year, will have to lose the music room to accommodate the growth in enrollment, and music, again, will transition to being delivered from class to classroom on a cart. You can see, we also, and we had a technology office that had the server equipment, as well as all of our computer replacement parts. We had to, we spent money to enclose the server, bring in air conditioning and HVAC to keep that cold, and to be able to reuse and repurpose the second half of that office as an instructional space for students. We do not have any capacity at H. Olive Day to absorb new enrollment. The Freeman School, within the next couple of years, we will be completely out of space there as well, so we cannot, in the current existing schools, bring in 195 more students. We don't have the capacity to house them and provide an appropriate educational setting. The space study committee that we formed with the town, we looked at all different options for how to accommodate this growth that we know is coming. The best solution, we looked at portable classrooms, we looked at a third location that might house an early childhood center. The best and most cost-effective solution that we identified was to expand the Freeman Kennedy School. If you look on the diagram on that sheet, the current Freeman Kennedy School has two wings that go off the back of the building. When it was originally designed, it was designed with the opportunity for expansion, by connecting those two wings. With that single building project, we would move the preschool and early childhood programings from the H. Olive Day to a dedicated early childhood center on the first floor. That frees up six instructional classrooms at the H. Olive Day, and then we would get an additional nine classrooms on the upper story of that that would accommodate the growth in enrollment we project to see at the Freeman Kennedy. So, in one building project, we would meet all of the future expansion needs of the town. We have applied twice now to the Mass School Building Authority to see if they would cost share this project. You can, MSBA has certain priorities that they consider in looking at those applications that did co-fund the H. Olive Day roof project, which was mentioned earlier, at a 50%, slightly over 50% reimbursement to the town. Because that project came in on time and under budget, we have some remaining funds in that line that could be appropriated to support the feasibility study. We have reapplied to MSBA again with the hopes that they may consider cost sharing, but at this point, from what we're hearing, over 50% of the schools across the Commonwealth are in need of significant repair or replacement at this time. Many have outdated HVAC systems, operating systems, and those have certainly been given priority for funding at the state level amidst the COVID pandemic. I think the likelihood of us getting funding through this third application to MSBA is probably low. We did put forward an effort, and we're hoping to see some return on that, but we can't really wait any longer. At this point, we really need to do a feasibility study. We need to look at design options, traffic patterns, wetlands, all of the things that we would need to consider in really assessing the feasibility of this expansion project. Also, because we're adding on to an existing building, we have to look at tying in all the electrical systems, septic systems, what would be required in terms of ADA upgrades because of the cost of the project. So, we are proposing that we move forward in appropriate funding from the town to move forward with the feasibility study. It is our hope that if we are invited to work with MSBA, that elements of this feasibility study would be accepted by them and would expedite that project moving forward with their shared participation. However, if we're not selected through the school building core building program, then it would give the town enough information to make informed decisions about how to move forward independently. The feasibility study would include a projected current construction cost for that, as well as, you know, all of the information that we would need about, again, roadwork, sewage, drainage, all of the other components that would be part of that project. Happy to answer any questions that people may have. Barry's here as well, and I think one of our members from our space study committee, Majora Champagne's here, too.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenberg.
Yes, could someone clarify which grades would be in which buildings as envisioned in this?
Sure. So, grades, kindergarten one and two would stay at the H. Olive Day. The only thing that would move over to the Freeman would be the preschool programming and the special education offices. So, we would have an early childhood center with preschool on the first floor of that.
What age group does preschool mean?
2.9 through kindergarten eligibility, so five.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Byron.
The study, Walter Byron, 80 Fruit Street, the study says that it will determine the cost and timeline to build the expansion option in the original design. Will that result in a set of construction plans, or are there more monies required to develop a set of construction plans?
So, this would not include the schematic design. This is just feasibility, and there would be an additional cost to developing schematic design. So, under the MSBA project, first you have to complete feasibility, and then you move into schematic design. Similar with the fire station, I believe, you started with feasibility and then moved to the schematic design portion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byron. Mr. Adan?
I just have a question.
Dr. Lardy. I listened to your presentation three years ago, and I remember it clearly, and I think you were very clear and articulate about your needs and the projections, so I don't think there's any question about it. I guess I don't understand, and why do you need to do another feasibility study when I think what you did the first time was clearly justified? And so, what's the purpose of another one?
So, we never did a feasibility study. Three years ago, we asked the town for $10,000 to fund, to work with the architect, to see realistically whether we could meet the space demands of the growing enrollment in one building project. So, they just did some preliminary, just rough sketches, to see if we would be able to accommodate. We have not done the ADA piece, we haven't done the traffic patterns or any of the rest of that, so thank you for, I'm glad you helped me clarify that.
Seeing no one else at the mic, we'll take a vote. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Passes unanimously. Articles 14 and 15 were in the consent calendar. Article 16, Ms. Klein.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
Been moved and seconded, Ms. Klein.
Article 16 enables the Community Preservation Committee to transfer $5,000 to use, to survey ponds to determine if and what kind of treatment the ponds will need. This allocation will be used only to survey the ponds and will not provide any treatment, and these ponds all have public access to all Norfolk residents.
Any questions, comments on Article 16? Sir, come on down to the mic.
David Turri, 47 North Street. I'm on the CPC committee and on the conservation, I'm the chairman. I'm against this. I got to sit down. Here we are, doing the study, but we're not paying for treatment. Those ponds have invasive plants in them, and we do have a quote from the people that we would use, and it's about $8,000, I don't have it right in front of me. And I disagree with the chairman and other members of the board, or the CPC, that said, oh, we don't have enough information. Well, we do. We had a written quote, and so I think this is a, excuse my language, half-ass approach.
To be clear, just so I'm getting this for the record, you're speaking, that's your own view?
Personal opinion.
And the majority of the CPC did move this forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments on Article 16? Seeing none requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, so it passes by a majority. Article 17 was in the consent calendar. Article 18, non-substantive changes to the general bylaws.
Mr. Moderator, I approve, I move to approve Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded.
Mr. Lutz.
The article that we adopted as part of the consent calendar was the first of three articles that deal with the general bylaws of the town. The town undertook an effort that began a couple of years back to basically rewrite the bylaws to make them more uniform, renumbering them so they made logical sense, fixing a lot of grammar, naming mistakes that had occurred over the years that had built up. This is the second article that deals with what is called non-substantive changes to those. There was a list of those outside in this printout. They include things like renaming boards that are misnamed, fixing titles of individuals that hold positions in town that the titles are wrong, bringing fines into line with state law, as well as other references to state and federal laws and regulations to make sure they're actually referencing the correct regulations. As I said, these are what are considered non-substantive changes. The next article that we'll discuss is where we get into some small substantive changes that we're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lutz. Any questions? And again, there was a handout that put these changes into a slightly different format, more of a matrix. Not the matrix. Slightly less complicated. Questions, comments, non-substantive changes of general bylaws. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Mr. Lutz, I assume?
Mr. Moderator, there are two possible ways that I can go at this. There's the general.
Let's try the general.
Mr. Moderator, I approve, I move to approve Article 19 as printed in the warrant. This article.
Is there a second?
Sorry. Sorry, I wasn't quick enough.
That's all right.
This article contains a small list of what would be considered substantive changes to the bylaws. They include striking a couple of bylaws, removing portions of the bylaws that either didn't make any sense or have become antiquated. I can go through those if people would like. They are printed in the warrant if you'd like to take a look at that.
And when Mr. Lutz said there was a few ways he could go at this, if someone has concerns about a specific one, I think that way would be to divide it up into a series of smaller motions. So, we have one motion right now, and let's see how we'll do with any discussion. This is much shorter than the prior article. Questions, comments on the substantive changes to the general bylaw? Again, I assume by the overall effort to kind of revamp our bylaws?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Seeing no comments or questions on Article 19 be approved as printed in the warrant. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 20 is a zoning bylaw, renumbering administrative changes, et cetera. Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 20 as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Thank you. Been moved and seconded, Mr. Garrity.
So, this article is the zoning bylaw version of Article 17, which renumbered the general bylaws. This renumbers the zoning bylaws, which currently have a mix of alphanumeric numbering, section F3B-CA, and this will turn to a pure numeric system, which will be much easier to deal with. It makes no changes, substantive or otherwise, other than numbering. And we didn't do it as a part of the consent calendar because you have to do a two-thirds vote as it's a zoning article.
Thank you. And we have a planning board recommendation on this, is to approve?
Chad Peck from the planning board, yes, the planning board does recommend to approve.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Article 20 requires a two-thirds vote. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 21, more, the non-substantive changes to the zoning bylaw. Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 21 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Mr. Garrity.
So, as just said by the moderator, this is the zoning bylaw, non-substantive, but language changes. So, it changes references to committees that don't exist anymore. It has references to improper statutes. We've changed the statutory references. It basically updates the wording of the bylaw where it needs wording. There are no changes that change anything in zoning. This also requires a two-thirds vote.
Chad, approval again? You don't have to get up every time for these. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Planning board approves as is required to have their recommendation. There is a matrix for these as well, there was also a handout for ease of review of what we're talking about here. Questions, comments on the non-substantive changes to the zoning bylaws? Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously.
I apologize for yelling out, but Carolina scored again. It's now 4 to nothing. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I missed that there.
The Bruins are losing.
Thanks for that. Great news. Article 22.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 22 as printed in the warrant.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Mr. Hubb.
Article 22 clarifies the definition of family. The advisory committee voted unanimously to approve this because it The advisory committee voted unanimously to approve this because it modernizes the way that family is defined for the zoning bylaw, and we agree with, the advisory committee agrees with how the definition as recommended by the planning board to make the term appropriate for its intended usage.
Chad?
So the planning board does recommend approval of this. This proposed definition is used by other towns and supported by the Mass Attorney General.
It's been recommended by the planning board. Mr. Rosenberg?
I just want to clarify my understanding that the only change made by this article is to change the definition of family and nothing else?
That's right, just as it's written out. Yep. Further questions, comments? Article twenty-two also requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Article twenty-three, Ms. Klein.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer, oh, sorry, it was, this is written wrong in here. Mr. Moderator, I move to approve the Article twenty-three as printed in the warrant.
I think actually it was right.
Is it?
Yeah, that motion, that transfer is correct because there was no amount, I don't believe, listed in the article.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
It's also on the screen. I don't think that's usually how we word them, but I apologize.
I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $15,000 to fund professional services to conduct appraisals of two properties on Lawrence Street for the purposes described in the warrant. I move to approve this transfer. This is how it should have been written.
Ms. Klein.
Okay. Article twenty-three allows the town to start the process of obtaining land required to complete the sidewalks on the Lawrence Street project. The developer is paying for their share of the sidewalks, but the town needs this appraisal to complete the sidewalks. This is a little bit confusing, so if anybody has any questions, let me know.
Sir, come on down.
Bernie Alex, forty-ninth Street. On the, bringing somebody in to look at this particular land, we already should have good prints from that area where we just did a lot of work on Lawrence Street. The town is only allowed to pay the market value for footage of land or for any piece of land. Now, we should know from our drawings that we have how big the areas are. All we do is subtract from it how much we're taking, and we give them fair market value. Why should we put all the cards on the table of $15,000 when we are all done with the project? The contractor, when he is done, when he does his as-built drawings, the as-built drawings become the drawings of record. So why should we put $15,000 out? It's like playing cards and play poker and put the cards with face up. I mean, you can play poker with me anytime you want. We leave them face up and I'll win every dime. But why should you tell the people that you're going to put out $15,000? Have you tried to negotiate this with the people?
Let me see if I can answer that, Ms. Klein.
Thank you.
So when you're going to take a piece of property, which is contemplated here, the law requires that you get a professional appraisal done as a prerequisite before you undertake an order of taking, and I think this is the first step in that process.
Don't we have appraisers? They do appraisals for the town?
We do not, at best of my knowledge, employ an appraiser within the town. That's normally farmed out.
If you know the square footage-
Unfortunately, I can just tell you from experience that you need to, for it to qualify for taking, it has to be a professional appraisal.
To make sure you understand, this is not, this was not the builder's, the developer's issue. This is because the, okay, this is because this-
You can't do anything until we own the land.
Just not back and forth, please.
Excuse me. This is, just to clarify, because sometimes things aren't fully explained, this is to complete the sidewalks, there's a stretch of land that is not owned by the developer that we now need to take through, I guess you would use the phrase eminent domain, I think. I'm sorry, I'm not a lawyer, but I think that's the phrase that you're using.
That's good.
Thank you. Just making sure. So we have to legally get an appraisal first, and then we go in and we can take the land, but we have to to complete the sidewalks. But this was not a mistake done by the developer or the town. This is just a tiny little piece of land that we need to be able to complete the sidewalks in this neighborhood, which is required in the contract that we used to build this neighborhood.
And to be, to be clear, to actually acquire property by taking or otherwise, we'll be back here. So that's another step in the process. There'll be another debate.
It goes back to fair market value per square foot.
Well, again, that's for a town meeting to debate once we get the appraisals.
I just think it's a waste of money where if you negotiate with the people themselves.
But it's legal. This is what we have to do legally.
Okay.
So we don't have a choice.
Sir?
Thank you. Kevin Miller, four Oakview Trail. This might be a little bit of a stupid question, but I'm curious, where on Lawrence Street is this located? Is this the land we're talking about, like opposite Cranberry Meadow?
Yes.
Because is it-
Do you have a picture? No? Can you describe to him exactly where this piece of land is? It's not part of-
So at the mic, so Rich, if you can describe where it is per, and that's not a stupid question, it's a good question, Mr. Miller. Thank you.
So the area in question we're talking about, from Old Lawrence Street up to Brett's Farm Road?
Okay.
On the opposite side of Brett's Farm Road.
Thank you for the question. Mr. Rosenberg?
Would it have been possible to buy the land from the current owner rather than taking it? And if so, had that been attempted? And might the cost of just negotiating a purchase without an eminent domain taking be less expensive?
Again, I don't want to get ahead of it. It doesn't say, "We're not approving a taking tonight." So it's very possible that, that any number of means of acquiring the property or not are in our future. Here, we're just doing the appraisals to see how much it's worth.
I guess where I was headed was that if the cost of purchase turns out to be less than $15,000, then it's foolish to spend the money doing the appraisal when one could have bought it for less.
Thank you for that. Seeing no further questions, and this requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes by a majority. Article twenty-four, a zoning amendment regarding accessory buildings. Mr. Garrity.
Mr. Moderator, I move to indefinitely postpone Article twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Mr. Garrity.
This article seeks to clarify an ambiguity in the current zoning bylaw. The current bylaw prohibits accessory buildings like garages, sheds, or other outbuildings, and swimming pools from the front yard. In order to clarify that this language was intended to prohibit accessory buildings and pools from the entire front yard, which includes not only the area directly in front of a home, but also the strip of property from the property line to property line that abuts the street, this article would add the word setback to the bylaw. One consequence of this change would impact corner lots by barring accessory buildings from what a reasonable homeowner may consider their side yard, but because it's a portion of a property, a budding street, it's also considered a front yard under the zoning. The majority of the advisory committee believe that further consideration of this article is warranted, and thus the committee voted by a vote of four to two to IP.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Chad, welcome. Give the planning board perspective.
So I move to substitute and approve Article twenty-four as printed in the warrant.
So we have a motion to substitute, and you have that in writing for, for our town clerk, or can you do it in writing for us? You don't have to do it right now, you can do it after you sit down.
Yeah, we can do it in writing.
Okay, so there's, on the floor is a motion to substitute the motion for indefinite postponement with a motion to actually approve it as it's written in the warrant. If that's, let me just explain the process as to, because it seems a little confusing. So the planning board vetted this, wanted it to be approved. It went to the advisory board for their review. The advisory board makes the initial motion. Advisory board feels differently about this than the planning board. Advisory board recommended against. Planning board is recommending for it and wants you now to consider approval. The way this works is we would vote on, by a majority vote, as to whether or not you want to substitute that motion for indefinite postponement with a motion to approve it. If that passes, then we'll discuss approval. Clear as much?
Clear as much.
Okay. So we have a motion to substitute on the floor. Don't go too far, Chad. So that's been moved and seconded. A motion to substitute is a simple majority, even though the eventual motion to approve would be two-thirds. All those in favor of the motion to substitute say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes by a majority, I declare. Okay, so we are back to a motion to approve. Chad, do you want to be heard on the motion to approve?
Yes, if we could go to the next slide. So there is a handout that I provided, or the planning board provided for you. A little hard to read up there, the wording's a little small, but in the warrant, we are proposing to change the one-word setback. I did include some graphics. They're not to scale, but I did include some graphics that shows the differences between the existing zoning bylaw and then adding the one-word setback what the proposed changes are. Now, currently, our building commissioner, he interprets it as we're proposing. So the current interpretation, and that's why we're saying, "Why would you adopt twenty-four?" To avoid a zoning interpretation against you that wouldn't allow you to have the detached garage, so forth, within 50 feet of the street. So it's currently being interpreted as we're proposing right now. So we're just trying to clean it up and make it so that there's no ambiguity. And I'm here, I'm here, we have questions, we got the town planner and the building commissioner.
Thank you. Anyone else want to be heard on this? Mr. Garrity, you want to be heard again?
Yes, please, Mr. Moderator. We appreciate the work of the planning board. We think zoning bylaws should be clear. This image perhaps doesn't do justice to what happens, so if you look at the corner lots on the bottom, the side with the street, the setback would actually be double what the other setback is for the other side or the back. All right, so that's, it's not to scale, but it's also not representative of really happening. So if you live in R1 and you have a 30,000-square-foot lot, right, and you happen to live in a corner, the first 50 feet of your lot, you can't put anything in, and then the side 50 feet of your lot, you can't put anything in. Before you know it, that's half your lot. It's 15,000 square feet. We think there should be, and it could be, a solution that treats corner lots much like normal lots are treated, where, yes, we don't want swimming pools in the first 50 feet or a shed right next to the sidewalk. But where it's a corner lot, perhaps there's a solution where we say, "Look, it has one front, and then there's the side that you don't have to have the 50-foot setback," which is a significant setback. Our zoning bylaw requires only 150 feet or 200 feet frontage for every lot. So that's a quarter of your lot on a 200-foot frontage lot. So we think that this requires more work, which is why we recommended the IP. Typically, we do zoning in the fall because you don't want to spend 20 minutes at nine o'clock at night talking about zoning. Nobody wants to do that. So that's our suggestion. When I IP this and we have a conversation, we did not have a good discussion about this in the meetings. We feel we didn't get a lot of information in the right way to help us make a decision, which is reasonable. You know, it is reasonable to change the bylaw the way they proposed. We wanted to propose another solution. There was no opportunity to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Anyone else? Mr. Rosenberg?
I'd be interested in hearing the planning board's response to the position that Mr. Garrity just stated.
I think they've stated it, but Mr. Peck, if you have anything additional?
I did want to provide one additional thing. So the one change that we're making to this bylaw of adding setback, that's the only change. If we want to have some language in there regarding a corner lot and how it's treated as far as which side of that corner lot is the front yard setback, that is actually a different zoning bylaw. It is not in this one, so there is probably some additional work that we need to do on the planning board to address that additional bylaw, to make it clear as which-
And I don't want to discuss that here.
And that's not part of tonight's discussion.
We're dealing with this.
Yep.
Right. And Mr. McCarthy, I think we have the debate kind of rounded out here. So. I was going to, if he wants to, because he's been the one that's faced with the, you know, enforcement or compliance with this. If our building commissioner wants to add something, I will allow that. Normally, I would wait to have someone ask him a question, but I think he could add some perspective.
Bob Bullock, the building commissioner. So this bylaw hasn't been changed since 1968. It's the same bylaw. The only thing that we're adding to it is putting setback at the very end of it because it has always been interpreted and always been acted on as the front yard is the front 50-foot setback off of a street. And that's, so any shed or any barn, any accessory building would have to be beyond the 50 feet. And that doesn't matter whether you're in a corner lot or a regular lot. So all we're trying to do is just clarify it so that there isn't a later interpretation that we mean from the front yard, from the street, all the way to the front of your house. And we have houses that are back to 300 feet, and they have sheds in the front yard, but not in the first 50 feet, so.
Thank you.
By voting for this, you're basically not changing anything, you're just giving clarification to it. So as far as the corner lot goes-
Yeah, let's, yeah.
That's another discussion for a different bylaw.
Right. Thank you, Bob. That's very helpful. Betsy, you have a, I really need you to get to the mic if you want to have a comment. Sorry.
I found the two motions confusing. Can you explain what we're voting on?
Sure. Happy to do it. Thank you, Betsy. I'll say, Betsy Pine, Seacong Street. I think I can, there we go. So what we're voting on is for, to approve this as it's written in the warrant right now. That's the motion on the floor. We're not voting on the original motion that the planning board, that the advisory board made to kill this. We're voting to approve it as you see it, to add that word setback on it so that it works as Mr. Bullock has suggested. He feels it should work, and the planning board as well. So this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I think, I'm going to do that one more time. I think it's pretty clear it was two-thirds, but let's do it one more time. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I'm going to declare that a two-thirds vote. Article twenty-five, another zoning bylaw. Mr. Lutz.
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article twenty-five as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? And the planning board approves? Mr. Peck? Planning board approves. Mr. Lutz?
Mr. Moderator, this article makes changes to the town's parking area bylaw. The primary change would allow for outdoor recreation conservation properties that have parking areas that are not paved, as long as they meet, and the write-up is incorrect here, as long as they meet the standards that are set by the planning board. There is a waiver provision if they seek to do something beyond the standards that are set by the planning board. I think this is a reasonable proposal, similar to the parking lots at Pond Street, for instance, which are not paved, but have crushed stone. And there are provisions built in to ensure that access, vehicle access is appropriate. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to add? Article twenty-five zoning bylaw regarding parking. Seeing none, also requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? It passes unanimously. Article twenty-six is a- Article 26 is another zoning bylaw. Ms. Klein?
I apologize. As you can see, none of these are written in my name. Mrs. Katz couldn't be here, so I'm taking over all of her recommend, all of her articles. So, this one I am not as prepared for. I apologize. Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article 26 as printed in the warrant.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Do you have an explanation, Ms. Klein?
I do. Okay. Whew. To see if the town of Norfolk will vote to amend the zoning bylaws in Section B definitions, by inserting "after mining of land and before nonconforming," the following new language below. I'm not going to read it, so please feel free to scan down. To amend the zoning bylaw section, schedule of use and regulations by asserting the below new language in the table in bold print without any associated section number into the same location in the schedule of use and regulations as amended under Article 20, or take any action relative thereto. Basically, this pertains to nature centers, and it makes a couple of small changes. There was some talk early in the process that this was going to negatively impact Stony Brook. That has been reviewed, and we have been assured that it is not. Anything that would have possibly has been taken out. So, now, these are minor changes. But again, should you want to scan this and have any questions, if I can't answer them, I'm sure there is someone here that can. And I apologize for not being prepared. This wasn't one of the ones that I wrote.
No worries. Mr. Peck, if you'd like to give the planning board's perspective here at the mic, or Mr. McCarthy, one or the other?
You could probably wait until somebody asks a question.
So, the planning board approves this, and we did have a joint meeting with the planning board, Stony Brook, and Leland Wild, and we collaborated on this and got it, got the language modified so that everybody was comfortable.
I don't think there's any questions. Oh?
Here we go. Come on, come on down.
Donna Jones, North Street. May I recognize the current director of Stony Brook, Lauren Gordon. She's in, doesn't live in Norfolk.
Absolutely. Thank you, Donna. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. I'm Lauren Gordon. On behalf of Mass Audubon, Stony Brook, 108 North Street, I wanted to start off by just saying that we are in full support of what Leland Wilds is trying to do. We're super excited to hear that there's interest in another nature center. Kyle has been a huge, you know, collaborator here at, you know, Mass Audubon, as well as nature throughout the state. And I say that, and I just wanted to make note on the comments that were written in the article here, the touting plan, the town planner comments and the advisory comments, and just that while we were part of the discussions and the planning board, we had, you know, emails and calls with the planning board, we just wanted to say that Mass Audubon has not taken a formal stance on the position of the bylaw, and we believe that we're exempt because of our status as a nonprofit educational institution that has operated in Stony Brook for the last 40 years. So, just wanted to go on record and mention that. Thank you.
And, and I agree with you that, but although I wouldn't call it an exemption, because there is a special permit requirement, it can't be denied, but, so you get substantial relief. So, I think that there is some accomplishment here, but we're not going to argue semantics.
Thank you.
Sir?
On behalf of the advisory board, I apologize for that. We were given the information that, once that everyone had made their discussions with each other, that they were in support. So, apologies for that being written in there.
Sir?
Thank you. Tim Holmes, 97 North Street. Similar question, just wanted to clarify, when we had these discussions originally, there was talk about the Dover Act, and earlier up in the bylaws, there was that exemption. Could someone comment, just to clear the record, you know, Stony Brook is definitely impacted by these appended changes, and why wouldn't it be covered under the Dover Act?
So, as a municipal attorney, and I'm not trying to step on our town council's toes here, the, it's, first of all, it's not automatic that any center like Stony Brook is going to be considered an educational. They happen to have a substantial educational component that would overwhelmingly likely entitle them to the relief under what we call the Dover Amendment under the Zoning Act. That doesn't mean that they don't have to apply for things that are required under our zoning bylaws. It just means that they would get substantial relief, and the zoning bylaws couldn't be used to reject them, that they're treated similar as regular schools, as group homes, as agricultural facilities, and religious facilities. So, they get substantial relief. There's still some room here for review of them, but they are largely exempt from many of the restrictions that zoning would throw at other types of facilities.
Thank you. So, for clarification, then, the proposed amendments here are in all likelihood going to be applied to Stony Brook as well, even though there wasn't the original intent of the proposal.
They certainly apply to anything that fits under the definition of a nature center. Whether or not we, the board could reasonably regulate them under this special permit process is another question. That would come up, depends on what they wanted to do.
Just want to clarify.
Yep, thank you. So, seems like we're good to vote on this, seeing no one else at the mic. It is a zoning bylaw. It does require two-thirds. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. Article 27, 28, 29 are all in the consent calendar. Article 30, Mr. Hupp?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from wastewater division enterprise fund retain earnings the sum of $58,000 to cover the shortfall in actual revenues for fiscal year '22.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Mr. Hupp?
Okay. So, the advisory committee voted unanimously to approve Article 30. The Public Works Wastewater Division Enterprise Fund is funded by user fees. Several accounts are overdue, despite using all the town's available mechanisms for collections. The taxpayers, us, through the town's finances, are being requested to cover the shortfall.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Mr. Diamond?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Peter Diamond, 84 Secong Street. I was at the meeting when the town approved to take over the sewer treatment plant at Meeting House, and during that meeting, we were told that it would cost the taxpayers no money. And now, we're looking at approving, I believe, $50,000 of taxpayer money to support the sewer treatment fund here. So, I'm looking for clarification on if it is taxpayer money that's being used, this $50,000. In Article 7, we approved $177,000 for the enterprise fund, and just looking for clarification on that. Thank you.
Ms. Robinson?
Mr. Moderator, this, this article actually asks the, those present to approve $58,000 from retained earnings. The retained earnings are within the enterprise fund itself, so this is not asking the taxpayers to fund it this year. We do have a shortfall from two of the four users, and we are actively seeking that to be collected, but this year, we don't need taxpayer support.
Further questions? Comments? Article 30. Ms. Klein?
Hi. Not as the advisory board. Susan Klein, Boardman Street. This is going to continue to be a problem. Two of the four people who are required to pay for this, so that taxpayers don't pay for it, are not paying. And at this point, there's really not much we can do about it. Suing them is going to cost us more than what they owe, taking their land. It's not worth anything. We won't be able to sell it and recoup our money. But we really need to figure this out, or this is going to continue to be an ongoing problem for us. As of today, and by, please correct me if I'm wrong, because I know you have been working on getting some of these receipts taken care of, so if I'm, I'm working on two-week, three-week old information here. The Meeting House HOA is paying their bills. The other Meeting House HOA is also working on paying their bills, but the developer and the major corporation, should they not be named, are not paying their bills. And as someone who is a resident of this town and whose mother lives in this area, I find it abhorrent that the retirees and the residents are the ones paying their bills and the major corporations and developers are not. And it makes me angry.
Major corporations?
Stop and shop. So, I think people should know that personally, that I'm not making a recommendation for how you should feel or how you should vote. I'm just simply speaking my mind as a resident. Just wanted to make that clear, in case it wasn't clear in the warrant.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Sir, come on down.
Ernie Alex, 49 North Street. These people that owe these monies to the town, are they paying taxes to the town for anything?
No. Oh, that's not true. I'm sorry. One of them, the developer, has not paid his property taxes, nor is he paying his HOA, I mean, his wastewater treatment. I'm not sure about the corporation. Are they paying their taxes?
One way of getting it paid is the town will not accept the payment of taxes until fines are paid. This is basically a fine. So, if they are not paying their taxes, they are subject to lien-put on their properties.
And I would imagine there may be one that would be subject to foreclosure proceedings. I don't want to get too deep in the weeds on, we've heard from Ms. Robinson that there are enforcement efforts going. Some of those are confidential. Some of those are subject to strategy. If there's any light you can shed on Mr. Alex's concerns, fine. If you feel that it's all part of ongoing legal strategy, then we're certainly not asking for that.
I would just say generally that with regard to the developer, there's no active projects that they are pursuing, he is pursuing. So, Mr. Alex is correct in his suggestion, but that hasn't been something that we can afford ourselves of. We have where appropriate leaned property, and we are working with town council very aggressively. We've got a meeting set up with one of them. We're working on setting up another one to bring in those monies. And then, we'll ask you to various, to consider Article 31, which will help us in our future efforts.
Also, it's a developer that will be looking for building permits. It could be denied permits until back, back monies are paid.
And I can assure you that we are very careful about that when any building permit comes forward.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Alex. Seeing no one else at a microphone requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. Article 31, Mr. Hupp?
Mr. Moderator, I move to authorize the select board to petition the general court for a special act authorizing the creation of a Norfolk downtown sewer district. A plan of the geographical limits on the district and the text of the special act are printed in the handout and shown on the screen in the auditorium. The plan and text of the special act were previously approved under Article 9 of the November 9, 2010 special town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Mr. Hupp?
The advisory committee recommends approval of this article. This is a bit of a remedy to the issues discussed in, in Article 30. Basically, the, by creating a special, a special district, it gives the town more tools to collect monies that are due for wastewater.
Thank you, Mike. Questions? Comments? Kind of a companion article. Mr. Diamond?
Question on the district and the boundary. Boundary encompasses a number of properties within the B1 zone and outside the B1 zone. Would all those properties now be subject to betterment fees, being that they're in the district?
Not yet, I don't, I don't believe. I mean, they would have to vote. If they're in the district, they could receive sewer, but Ms. Robinson or Mr. Harrington, if you want to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Harrington, Town Council. So, this is the first step, which allows the town to adopt this sewer district. So, the, the boundaries that you see are properties that are eligible to be in the district, but they'll be, if, if the legislature approves the legislation, then we'll have the opportunity to select those properties that will go in the district. And the properties that go in the district may be subject to a betterment if the town decides to better the property.
Meaning, build a sewer that could serve them.
Just a quick follow-up question, and you mentioned that those properties would be selected. Would there be another town meeting vote on which properties are actually in that district, or is this vote here designate all those properties to be in that district?
I believe this vote designates those properties to be eligible for the district, yes. So, there would not be an additional town meeting vote.
If there, Mr. Diamond, and I don't know if this, this helps, if there was an additional need to set aside monies to actually create more sewer capacity, that certainly would be a town meeting vote.
Mr. Moderator, if I might, so, the intent for now is, yes, the district is bigger than this current system facilitates, but without the district, we're not able to issue betterments if we needed to in order to fund, say, the replacement of some of the system. And we have less-than-ideal situations where we can aggressively collect the amounts owed. So, that's really the intent, by asking the town to take this up again. For some reason, it didn't make it to the legislature in 2010. Should the town decide to build a second sewer treatment plant and, and maybe modify the district, I, I would not imagine that the town would issue any betterments for properties it didn't need to until that vote was taken.
Thank you. Sir?
Chris Henry, 30 Boardman Street. With the ever-increasing need for affordable housing, why would we omit the Hillcrest Village into this, this map? It would seem that sewerage would increase the build-out capability of a lot. Why wouldn't we want to include the town's property within that district, particularly because it borders it? Thank you.
And I'm not sure if anyone can answer that question?
I would answer it by saying, Mr. Moderator, that until we've done a study to, and fully understand where a second sewer district could go, it's too soon to say that a particular property is going to be in it or not in it. And so, the town planner's been working on this diligently, and when we get to that point, then it will be a much larger discussion in town and, and town meeting vote to perhaps change this map to what is, that future district might be, but it's too soon to say right now.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenberg?
I understood Mr. Harrington to have said that the properties shown on the map are eligible to be in the district. Would somebody clarify for me how it's determined whether or not eligible properties actually are in the district?
I think he means they're in the district and they're eligible for sewer services, but I think the special act makes them part of the district.
That, thank you, Mr. Moderator. That is correct. The, the district identifies the boundaries of the sewer district, but the town does not need to offer every property within the sewer district sewer service. It's based, it, it can still act based on the capacity it has in the sewer system. And I would say, unless there's an expansion of the plant, I don't know that there would be room for additional properties outside of the four that currently have access to it.
Follow-up, Mr. Rosenberg?
Am I correct in understanding then, that it is the town or some town board that will make the decision about whether or not a particular property is offered sewer service?
Well, I think that's all out there in front of us. Largely, it would be the, the Select Board, but depending upon what kind of sewer service it was, it could be a number of different entities, including this body, Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you.
I think that was the two-minute warning.
Yeah. Sure. Mr. Henry, come on.
I just had a follow-up question about the, the map. So, looking at the map, it looks like what's lettered as B, is that the 25 Rockwood Road Boyd project there? Not Boyd, sorry, the...
The newer, the newer one?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
So, we offering sewerage to that property and not to the affordable housing?
We're not, we're not offering sewerage to any properties right now, except the ones that are in the current district, which are the two condo associations and the properties owned or leased by developers. The rest of the district was, this was contemplated in 2010 and never built. So, it was too late, the process is here, to change the map just for this, and that we were, it was strongly urged that we pass the map the way it is, so we can get the current situation better resolved. And this district is along the lines of what we might build in the future. If the town study decides that we should build a second plant and expand the district, we would need to come back to town meeting and change the map to whatever that would be then.
I'd also submit, they just spent a whole boatload of money building their own private sewage treatment, so they're probably not that interested in spending more money right now.
Understood. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, requires a majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
Passes by a majority. Article 32 was on the consent calendar. Article 33, committees. Mr. Bechkovsky.
Mr. Moderator, I move to amend the Norfolk general bylaw, Article 3, Committees, Section 7, Community Preservation Committee, by deleting the words "three precincts" and "one at large" and inserting in its place the words "four precincts." Provided, however, if there is no available candidate from a specific precinct, then the Select Board may instead appoint an at-large candidate. And provided further that in the event the town has voted to adopt the amendments to the general bylaws proposed in Article 17, all section references included above shall be changed, so it corresponds to their new section numbers adopted under Article 17.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Mr. Bechkovsky.
Norfolk has moved from three voting precincts to four in, as a result of the 2020 census. This article reverses the action that took place when the town moved from three precincts to, from four precincts to three, which made the fourth precinct an at-large representative. This moves us back to having one representative from each of the precincts within Norfolk, instead of having an at-large representative.
Any questions? Comments? Seeing none, so general bylaw requires a simple majority vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It passes unanimously. May I get... May I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.